Everybody, wow, it's nice to see. Welcome, everyone, to the Thursday, July 28, 2022, meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. It's really nice to see faces in the audience, a lot of faces. This is great. This is like the old meetings. So, the County Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually pursuant to Assembly Bill 361 until further notice, and you can go on the county website and see the different ways you can join us. Obviously, a lot of people decided to come in person, and that's a wonderful thing. And you can look at that. With that, let's go through the pages here. I will call the meeting to order and ask everybody to join me in a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trip, could we do a roll call, please? Present.
Noah Levy.
Present.
Brian Mitchell.
He's here on Zoom.
Brian, we're having trouble hearing your audio.
Okay.
Thomas Mulder.
He's there.
He's there. He's not being monitored. We want to move forward.
Yes, was that everybody?
Peggy O'Neil.
Here.
And Melanie McCaffrey.
Present.
Mike Newman.
Mike Newman is here.
All right, we have a full house, so, thank you, Trip.
I'm not moving right now.
Give those guys a second. So, Director, while they're figuring that out, do we have any modifications?
We don't have any modifications to the agenda per se. I do want to call your attention to a stack of supplementals that have been provided to you. One of the most important supplementals, I think, that would be important for you to look at tonight is supplemental number two, and that, we modified two conditions of approval. We'll explain that later, but I just want to let you know that you do have that copy in front of you. There are some additional letters and additional correspondence still was received today.
Okay, thank you. And since we have a large meeting, and it's gonna, I know there's a lot of people that want to speak, we are going to have a presentation from staff, then we're going to have a presentation from the applicant, followed by a presentation from Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. Try to keep them as short as you can, so we have the maximum time we can. And then, we will allow some time for questions. Out in the front, there is a sign-up sheet if you wish to speak tonight, if you're in the audience, and I would suggest you get signed up. It looks like this. I've got the first page of it already, so there's already one page worth of people that have signed up to speak, so it should be out there on a clipboard. And, okay. You can do it right now, if you want, so, go ahead, Melanie. Melanie'd like to.
Thank you, through the chair. I would like to, for public transparency, say that I had been on a visit in 2021 to the proposed site. All of the commissioners were invited, and some of us, including myself, received a tour. As part of my position with Bear River Band of the Ronarville Rancheria, I reviewed the DEIR and FEARIR for cultural resources impacts, and recommendations were with no required conditions other than the standard inadvertent discovery protocols. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Melanie. All right, with that, we'll open the mic up to public comment, and this is on any item that is not on tonight's agenda, so this would not be for anything that has to do with Nordic, basically. Welcome, Kent.
Kent Stowoski, I always, I call it gun-jumping when you kind of get ahead, so I'm always looking forward to other things that will be coming for us in very large projects later. And the one I'm looking at is the offshore wind project, and so I started doing a little bit of research on that one, and I was trying to get a little bit more information from Larry Adkowager, but I found it quite interesting how untested and unproven the technology is for that. So these projects will be coming before you, you know, for the land-based portions of them. I just hope that the same environmental groups that have already semi-endorsed this will take the time to make sure that there's science behind the use of them. I have major concerns of anything that's 800-foot-tall, potentially riding on waves and vibrating out there, and what effects this is going to have on our critters out there, be it the fish, the whales, the migratory birds. And my understanding is there's just very few of those out there, nothing that has already come to fruition that's of any size, and of course, your magnitude of this, the more you have, the more the potential problems. So I just strongly suggest that all the, all the groups, everybody, start looking in this, so they'll smart themselves up before they totally commit and say, "This is our salvation." It may be ruination, rather, and I'd hate to see that happen. We all look toward alternative sources of energy. My one thing I came across there, it appears in one of the articles, it looks like it costs four times as much for the energy offshore and on, and I can understand that. Mother Nature does not want things out there, and she beats the ever-living out of them. And I would hate to be that guy doing maintenance out there on one of those things when you're bouncing over down 400 feet up in the air. So that's just something I highly recommend everybody start paying attention to, and always helps to know things in advance, rather than stuff comes to you last minute and we have no science to back things. So thank you for the opportunity to address this topic today.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address the commission? All right, I'm going to go to the phone lines, and we have one hand up, and that is John Schaefer. Nope, another hand. Star six to unmute yourself.
Chair, we're having some technical difficulties. We may not be able to hear them. Josh is working on that right now.
Okay, what would you suggest we do in that case?
I would suggest trailing the public comment period until we get this resolved.
Okay.
And then, everything that we do from here on out will need to do in-house and before we go outside, and hopefully by then, we will have it fixed.
Okay, so we'll open up public comment a second time for everything, basically.
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Kent, can I ask a question? Can they hear, then, if they're on Zoom?
It appeared, because they were trying to speak back to us, so I would say that that's probably true when we were doing roll call. I could see Thomas, and I could see Brian, and, but, we weren't hearing them.
Were they talking? Were they talking that you could see?
Neither one of them were. They weren't, they weren't talking, so.
Is there any way of asking them?
Commissioner Mulder is nodding his head right now, and maybe if you ask him to give you a thumbs up or something.
Okay. Thomas, could, can you hear us? Okay, he's saying yes, but you can't speak back to us.
He could type his comments.
He's trying, yeah, nothing. Brian's the same way. He's talking. Okay, well.
We could do this. I'm on, I'm on, I'm waiting.
Okay, so let's, let's just, we'll come back to public comment, and we will let anybody who wishes to speak. So let's go on to our action summaries and do the consent calendar. That shouldn't take long, and hopefully Josh will have that, so anyhow, so we'll move on to item number E, consent agenda, review and approval of a whole bunch of action summaries, approval of the March 3, 2022, action summary, approval of the March 17, 2022, action summary, the April 7, the April 21, the May 5, the May 12, the May 19, and the June 2, I believe, was the last one. No, there's one, two more, and the June 16 and July 7. So is there anybody who wishes to have?
Chair, I'm sorry. We're just reviewing the law. You can't take action on anything until we have full ability to communicate.
So, is that the, this the part where you come up and sing?
You don't want to do that to people.
Do we need to, I mean, I know we've got a lot of people waiting, but do we need to take a recess while we get this sorted out, so that we can proceed normally?
No, we can't, because people that want to call in can't speak, so it's not fair to them.
Right.
But they can hear the people who are talking.
I suppose we could proceed.
I'll go along with whatever they say.
Yeah.
We're not going to take action, we're just going to start with.
We will be taking actions, so maybe we should. That's probably fair enough.
So, you, the limitation is not taking action. So you can't take action on the consent calendar, but we can begin the public hearing on the public hearing item and begin the staff presentation.
Okay.
It's pretty evident that everybody can hear on Zoom.
So we'll just come back to consent at the end of the meeting and, and let public speak on anything that is not agendized tonight.
Perfect.
Okay. Sorry for the inconvenience. So we'll move on to item number E, then, and which, or no, excuse me, we'll move on to public hearings, item number G, and the big one is Nordic Aqua Farms, and so we'll take a staff report on that, please.
My name is Cade McNamara, and I'm the assigned planner to the project. Here with me is Byron Turner of Laco and Associates. Behind me, you have the Nordic Aqua Farms team, accompanied by the landowner of the Harbor District, and GHD, the project agent. Nordic Aqua Farms is applying for a coastal development permit for a land-based recirculating aquaculture facility to farm and produce Atlantic salmon. A special permit is being requested for an exemption to parking and loading space requirements of industrial-zoned parcels. The property owner, the Harbor District, is a co-applicant in the environmental impact report prepared for the project. Here's a vicinity map showing where the site would be located. The project would be a land-based recirculating aquaculture system, as previously stated, consisting of five buildings with a combined footprint of 766,530 square feet, equipped with 657,000 square feet of rooftop solar. The project will be conducted in two phases, with a preliminary site preparation, phase zero, to include cleanup and demolition activities. Phase one will include intake and outfall connections, as well as ground densification to prepare for this construction of the phase-one grow-out, which would include Building One, hatchery Building Three, fish processing plant, and administrative Building Four. Building Five would be a waste treatment and backup power system, and oxygen generation, storage, and stormwater systems. Phase Two would include additional ground densification. Phase Two would also include a grow-out model of Building Two, soil remediation, expansion of utilities, the decommissioning of an existing leach field, and the applicant is proposing to raise Atlantic salmon, subject to the approval of California Department of Fish and Wildlife.
One of the factors that makes this a desirable location for aquaculture is that it has existing facilities to provide large amounts of both fresh and salt water, and has an existing facility to address treated, to address treated and processed water. These two images on your screen show locations of both the water intakes. The small inset picture, the small inset picture shows all the infrastructure to be used or improved. The orange dashed line is the location of the existing outfall pipe. You'll notice on both larger pictures that the outfall pipe originates on the subject site. The RMT-2 intake is the L-shaped feature in the bay, and the red dock intake is located to the north. These two intakes will be replaced with new water, with new, will be outfitted with new water lines, one for firefighting water and the other for processed water. The permitting of these facilities is not in the jurisdiction of the county, but since they serve the project, they are evaluated in the EIR. The project will use 12.5 million gallon, million gallons per day, consisting of both freshwater and saltwater. The saltwater will come from intakes on Humboldt Bay in the amount of 10 million gallons per day. Freshwater will come from the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District in the amount of 2.5 million gallons a day. The water intake structures in Humboldt Bay will need to be upgraded to provide, will need to be upgraded to provide users who locate on the Harbor District property. Since the intakes are within the bay, they are in the Coastal Commission's jurisdiction and will be permitted by the Coastal Commission. The Harbor District is also upgrading water lines for fire flow and conveyance of saltwater. These lines have been located completely within the Coastal Commission retained jurisdiction. The pictures in this slide depict the existing water intake facilities. The two pictures on top show the Red Tank Dock, and the two photos on the bottom show the Redwood Marine Terminal Two. The screen size of the intake will be modified to 1 millimeter to prevent the entrapment and entravement of larval marine organisms. This is smaller than the standard 1.75-millimeter outlined in the ocean plan. The impact of the water intake, of the water use, is addressed in the EIR. Effluent discharge will be treated via a brand-new wastewater treatment plant constructed by the project applicant. Permitting of the outfall will require a coastal development permit from the Coastal Commission, and a national pollutant discharge elimination systems permit, or also known as NEPDES, or NPDES, from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. The applicant is proposing to discharge treated effluent via the existing ocean outfall pipe. The outfall pipe is approximately 1.55 miles, is a 1.55-mile-long, 40-inch diameter with 144-user ports that discharges into the Pacific Ocean. There are currently two permitted users that discharge treated wastewater through the outfall, DG Fairhaven and Samoa Wastewater Treatment Plant, which discharge approximately 1.1 million gallons per day. The outfall has a capacity to discharge 40 million gallons, 40 million gallons a day. Outfall for this project will consist of 12.5 million gallons a day. The impact of using the outfall to discharge this amount of water is evaluated in the EIR. I want to take a moment to clarify all the different permitting agencies involved in this project. The first is the County of Humboldt, which is responsible for approving the land-based component of the project. This includes the CDP Coastal Development Permit for the demolition of existing facilities, and construction of the new Aqua Farm facility, and the special permit for a reduction of the number of parking and loading spaces. The next set of permits are being applied for by the Harbor District to upgrade the water intakes. This will involve a coastal development permit from the California Coastal Commission, with other permits required from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, the National Marine Fisheries Service, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. The ability to discharge treated water to the ocean will be permitted by the California Coastal Commission and the Regional Water Quality Control Board. The Coastal Commission will need to issue a coastal development permit for the intensification of the use of the outfall, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board will issue a national pollution discharge elimination system permit under the authority of the Clean Water Act. Prior to being able to raise any fish or importing any eggs to the site, the applicant also must receive approval from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife as to the type of fish to be farmed. There must be a license to import eggs, and both of these are issued by CDFW. The permitting jurisdiction for the land-based development of the project requires a coastal development permit with Humboldt County, which is appealable by the planning, by the Coastal Commission. The County of Humboldt is the lead agency under SEQA. The county is responsible for the environmental analysis of the project, including identifying the proposed impacts of the project, and the disclosure of those impacts to the public, and identifying appropriate mitigation measures to lessen any identified impacts. The county has analyzed the entirety of the project components within the draft environmental impact report, from the intake to the land-based development and to the outfall. Pictured above, you will find photos from 1972 and 2005. The parcel is an active brownfield site that has received grant funding from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for cleanup and assessment activities. Activities have occurred in, since the mid-'90s up until 2019. The site is now characterized by remnant pulp mineral infrastructure and concrete foundations. The majority of these structures will be demolished prior to phase one of the project. Site remediation prior to construction, which is phase zero, as part of the demolition of the site, will be removed from the site. All buildings will be removed from the lease area. As part of the building removal, any remnant lead or asbestos will be abated. As the site is clear soil testing, as the site is clear, soil testing will be conducted to determine if and where soil remediation is needed.
The project has. The project site is combined zone of industrial general and coastal dependent industrial, with an archaeological combining zone to the east of Vance Avenue, depicted by the red line there. All construction-related activities will occur within the 36-acre footprint entirely located on coastal-dependent industrial-zoned lands. The project falls under the local coastal program, the Humboldt Bay Area Plan. Again, the project site is zoned and designated industrial and coastal-dependent industrial. All development will occur on the coastal-dependent industrial designation east of Vance Avenue. Aquaculture and aquaculture support facilities are principally permitted uses under both of these designations. The parcel is also within an archaeological combining zone. Cultural resource investigations identified that no cultural resources were located on The Humboldt Bay Area Plan identifies that industrial development shall be located on the highest priority site. Priority sites have a numerical system to identify site compatibility for proposed use. Priority one sites are sites where a proposed use can utilize existing facilities and is the lowest priority number. This site is a priority-two site, meaning that there is existing infrastructure that will be used, but the project will involve new construction rather than using existing facilities. Due to the site being in brownfield condition, abatement and demolition are required for adaptive reuse, hereby requiring new construction for the project. For this reason, this is the highest priority site available for the project proposed. Other sites would require new infrastructure or extension of existing infrastructure, expanding the footprint of development. This would not provide an environmentally superior alternative and would not improve existing environmental findings or alternatives. The Humboldt Bay Area Plan identifies aquaculture as a coastal-dependent use, and coastal-dependent uses shall have priority other, over other developments near the shoreline. The project does not involve impacts to wetlands. Additionally, new development will be located within contiguous with and in close proximity to existing industrial-designated areas. A wastewater treatment facility will be required component of this project, treating all effluent prior to discharge. The project area is available to accommodate the proposed use without an impact on coastal resources as outlined in the environmental impact report. The proposed use is located on a coastal-dependent industrial property, surrounded by industrial general and other coastal-dependent industrial parcels. The EIR identifies that no coastal resources will be impacted that are not mitigated to a level of less than significance. Dune mat is a plant community existing on-site that qualifies as environmentally sensitive habitat area, also known as ESHA under the Coastal Act. Dune mat habitat ranges from high-quality habitat consisting of a predominance of dune mat species with potential dune mat habitat and significant anthropogenic alterations, and a high percentage of non-native invasive species present. This area showing minimal evidence of anthropogenic activity and minimal invasive species is considered environmentally sensitive habitat area and is being protected as a part of the project design. This area is along the southern property boundary, as depicted. The buildings have been rotated and redesigned, moved north in order to protect this area. The area identified as ESHA will have a minimum of a 35-foot buffer. Within this buffer is going to be a 20-foot-wide fire road. This road would only be used in emergency access, for emergency access, and will be constructed with pervious material. To prevent trampling and disturbance of environmentally sensitive habitat area, construction fencing is required along the edge of this buffer, as shown on the site plan. This would be set back 15 feet from the road. The fencing will remain in place throughout the construction period to prevent vehicles, equipment, or materials from entering ESHA. The grading plans for the project site will provide finished pad grades with no grade changes at the edge of the buffer or fire road within the ESHA buffer. The ESHA protection measures are described as mitigation measure Bio-7A within the environmental impact report. Where there are dune mat species, but not in a quantity to qualify as ESHA, the species will be part of a mitigation plan providing compensatory restoration at an off-site The property is located in an area of low to moderate geologic instability. Geotechnical investigation by SHN in 2020 outlines an analysis of natural hazards in the county and recommends that the project require designs in accordance with seismic and foundation design criteria, as well as site preparation and grading criteria per California Building Code, and American Society of Civil Engineers' minimum design loads for buildings and other structures. Geotechnical recommendations will be incorporated into the final plans and specifications for the project and will be implemented during construction. Therefore, this is consistent with the seismic and public safety elements of Volume One of the Humboldt Bay Area Plan, which is going to be the applicable criteria outlined in the local coastal plan of the Humboldt Bay Area Plan. New development within the 100-year tsunami run-up elevation is allowable with specific provisions outlined in the Humboldt Bay Area Plan. The parcel is within a tsunami hazard area. Deep foundations and ground densification grade will be constructed as recommended by the project's geotechnical evaluation, and site-specific tsunami inundation analysis performed for the project, to protect structural integrity in the event of tsunami or associated wave scoring. Backup generators will be elevated above the predicted tsunami wave height to avoid potential for release of pollutants, and they would be underground in two 2,500-gallon tanks, vented, anchored, and armored to prevent release. Building designs for the hatchery would require tanks to be developed to withstand a 2,500-year hazard event.
Loading spaces and parking are as follows. There are 30 spaces for office staff, production staff, 90 spaces, and six of them will be ADA. With regard to SEQA, part of the planning commission action is to consider the SEQA document that has been prepared for this, for this project. In this case, an environmental impact report has been prepared. A resolution has been presented for the planning commission's consideration, which identifies how, to identify how the environmental review process and the EIR comply with the requirements of SEQA. This process did not, however, start with a preparation of an EIR. Initially, it was determined that based on the evidence and the record, that there was not a significant unavoidable environmental impact associated with redeveloping a brownfield site, and a mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the land-based portion of the project. At the time, it was anticipated that the outfall permitting and the intake permitting that was being undertaken by the Harbor District would be slightly ahead of this project, and so there would already be an environmental analysis for those projects. This did not occur. A significant number of comments were received during the public review of the mitigated deck, many asking for. neg deck, many asking for preparation of an EIR. Other comments pointed out that the water intake and outfall needed to be addressed in the environmental document as one project. In consultation with the Harbor District, Nordic, and the county, it was decided that preparing an EIR was the appropriate action. The EIR process was initiated and followed to address all the components of the project. The DEIR examined the potential environmental effects associated with the operation of a land-based facility, the outfall, and the water intake. The analysis of the draft EIR found that there would not be any significant unavoidable environmental effects associated with the development and operational activities of the project. The county offered and engaged in government-to-government consultation under AB 52 for both the preparation of the mitigated negative declaration and the environmental impact report. No identified cultural resources associated with this site were discovered. The county met with tribal leaders from the Wiat, Bear River Band of Ronerville Rancheria, and the Urok. The Blue Lake Rancheria declined government-to-government consultation but did submit a letter supporting the project.
The DEIR identified potentially significant effects which are mitigated to a level of less than significant. It should be noted that these are associated with construction activities and not operation. The loss of dark-eyed gilia shall be replaced at a ratio of 3 to 1, and steep-sighted excavations capable of trapping mammals shall be ramped or covered if left overnight. Bats shall be protected by following a schedule for demolition. Special status amphibians shall be protected by determining possible presence through a pre-construction survey, and if present, shall be relocated and addressed in consultation with CDFW. Ground disturbing activities shall be conducted outside of the avian nesting season to protect special-status avian species. Each one of these protection measures requires additional biological investigation prior to ground disturbing activities. Soil densification shall only occur during certain tidal elevations to avoid impacts to marine mammals. For special-status plant species around the piling removal, a habitat survey will be conducted and areas of special plant species shall be avoided. For the protection of longfin smelt mitigation measure Bio-6A states that the Harbor District shall mitigate for the potential loss of longfin smelt larvae due to the entrainment by the baywater intakes. Mitigation consists of habitat creation or enhancement to provide longfin smelt spawning, rearing, or nursery habitat capable of producing the number of longfin smelt larvae lost due to entrainment. Sensitive communities shall be replaced through compensatory mitigation for coastal rambles and dune mat. In regard to air quality, demolition and construction activities may likely stir up dust or generate asbestos. There are specific measures in place that must be followed during construction to prevent this from happening. A cultural monitor must be on-site at all times, and inadvertent discovery protocol is in place as required by state law. All of the buildings will be required to follow geotechnical requirements, and site remediation will require that hazardous materials are identified and disposed of properly.
And those are why those impacts are mitigated to a less significant level. The draft EIR was released for public review on December 20, 2021, and the review period was set at the maximum called for in the CEQA guidelines, which is 60 days. CEQA reform has reduced us to 45 days in 2022. But in response to the public review of the draft EIR, the county received 242 comments, 12 from local, state, and federal agencies, 19 from non-governmental organizations, 79 from individuals, and then an additional 132 letters of support. The CEQA guidelines require that the lead agency requires the lead agency to evaluate comments on environmental issues received from persons who reviewed the draft EIR and prepare a written response. For public agencies who comment on the DEIR, there needs to be at least 10 days given prior to certification of the FEIR to allow for review. The FEIR Final Environmental Impact Report has been prepared to respond to all of the comments made on the DEIR. This includes master responses, which were prepared to respond to comments and questions that were frequently asked. While there were changes needed to the draft EIR, there is an errata that is provided as Chapter 4 of the FEIR. It is worth noting that the FEIR has been available to the public agencies and available to the public and agencies since July 1, 2022, far beyond the required 10 days. Master Response 1 is with regard to traffic and truck safety, truck and traffic safety. Multiple comments were provided expressing concern regarding the DEIR analysis of impacts related to project traffic. The comments focus on impacts on truck conflicts with bicycles and pedestrians and avoiding manila for northbound traffic. Master Response 1 was written specifically to address the question and comments on the traffic on comments on traffic in the DEIR. The level of traffic is going to increase, the maximum increase is 7.5% where trucks would get on New Navy Base Road, and as trucks progress north, the increase goes down to 2.5% as far as the overall truck trips. From 2017, only one instance of pedestrian or bicycle collision with vehicle has occurred and been documented, and that was with a passenger vehicle, not a truck. So there has not been any conflicts since 2017.
Master Response 2 addresses a number of comments received regarding greenhouse gas and energy. The proposed aquaculture facility would use approximately 22 megawatts daily. The project applicant has worked with local environmental groups to make a commitment to RCEA goals of non-carbon and renewable energy, which include by 2025 that 100% of RCEA's power mix would be from a combination of state-designated renewable energy sources, which include solar, wind, biomass, small hydroelectric, and geothermal, and some state-designated net-zero carbon emissions from existing large hydroelectric facilities. By 2030, Humboldt County will be a net exporter of renewable energy, and RCEA's power mix will consist of 100% net-zero carbon emissions renewable sources. This is also a condition of approval for the project. If this commitment were not in place, there would be a reliance on the local gas-fired power plant. By procuring green energy sourcing, this provides an alternative and thereby deeming the potential impact less than significant. Once local renewable energy is available, the applicant will purchase locally available green power with a safeguard provision in place that if local cost exceeds 10% of market cost of renewable energy, that the applicant will continue to purchase renewable energy put into the grid elsewhere in California. This still offsets the carbon footprint to net zero and shows a commitment to locally-sourced alternatives. Additionally, rideshares and Nordic Aqua Farms transit opportunities are in place for potential employees. These goals are in line with the State of California Energy Initiatives and follow and allow for the project to offset carbon intensity through a feasible and measurable means. The commitment holds the applicant responsible for offsetting greenhouse gases produced by this project, and for these reasons, this impact has been deemed less than significant.
Master Response 3 is in response to concerns about fish escape and the potential impacts of a potential escape. Between the project description and the master responses, the information presents that this facility would be designed in such a way to prevent fish from escaping. From the time eggs enter the facility, they are never moved or transported in such a way that there is the potential for escape. Everything is done within the building or enclosed pipes. All drains go through a series of screens and the water treatment plant before water is released from the facility. The tanks are within fully enclosed steel buildings and have been designed to withstand earthquakes and tsunami inundation. In the event of an earthquake and the sloshing of water out of the tanks, there will be nets over the tanks to keep the fish from escaping. The potential for fish escape is extremely low. This concern is further mitigated by the fact that all fish will be female and will be unlikely to hybridize with the wild and with native fish populations and would not likely survive after being raised in a very controlled environment. This further reduces any impact from fish escape. As a requirement, the plan submitted to CDFW will include a fish escape response plan. It is not expected this will ever be used. It has never been used in any other land-based recirculating aquaculture system operated by Nordic but will be provided nonetheless. Master Response 4 is regarding fish health and biosecurity. As stated before, recirculating aquaculture systems are highly controlled environments, and Nordic treats water and tests eggs before they are allowed to grow out into the grow-out tanks. An intake water passes through ultrafiltration to prevent bacteria, parasites, and most salmonid viruses of concern from entering the farm. Viruses that have the potential to pass the 0.02-micron ultrafiltration would then be subjected to a high dose of UV disinfection sufficient to neutralize the threat of any finfish viruses of concern. Eggs go through pathogen screening at both the source hatchery and at the Nordic facility, and then the eggs and fry are kept in quarantine for an appropriate length of time to see if any disease presents itself before the fish are transferred to the grow-in area. Effluent that leaves the site will be screened for pathogens. It should be pointed out that many of the concerns raised about pathogens, use of the antibiotics, and other diseases comes from reports about pen-grown fish. This is a completely different type of facility, a completely different process.
Master Response 5 addresses a number of comments received expressing concerns related to the use and discharge associated with the marine outfall. Water quality for effluent discharge will be monitored by the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems permit will be required. The associated monitoring was executed by the applicant to address potential for harmful algal blooms and changes that may occur on the ocean floor. This type of modeling is well in excess of the requirements of the regional board but provides robust data for the review of the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Modeling of effluent evaluates marine toxicity and physiological stress. Temperature and salinity are the areas of focus for this study, since ammonia, specifically ammonium nitrate, is modeled lower than the allowable discharge thresholds. Numeric modeling shows that temperature of the effluent water released is slightly higher than the ambient water temperatures. This would be an increase of 0.1 degrees Fahrenheit. That salinity is slightly lower than ambient waters and meets the dilution target within five feet of the diffusers. And that nutrient release, specifically ammonium nitrogen, is significantly lower than threshold allowable. This would be 0.004 milligrams per liter of the 0.6 milligrams per liter allowable. Additionally, the applicant will voluntarily conduct baseline monitoring prior to Phase 1 construction and three years into operation at full buildout to ensure that receiving waters, water quality objectives are met.
Master Responses 6, 8, and 9 are more about related to process and less related to impacts of the project. All comments are important, and all comments are part of the administrative record that has been forwarded to you, the planning commission here. Some comments do not raise significant environmental issues, so a master response is prepared to address the comments unrelated to environmental issues. The county is also not required to devote significant resources attempting to study comments that are opinion or fall outside the scope of environmental review. The master response 9 addresses the level of detail required in an EIR in response to comments requesting additional information for environmental analysis where there have been technical studies prepared. CEQA Guidelines Section 15151 states that an EIR should be prepared with a sufficient degree of analysis to provide decision-makers with information which enables them to make a decision which intelligently takes into account of the environmental consequences.
Master Response 7 addresses areas of concern voiced over intake of biological productivity and intake of salmonoids. The image depicted above shows fish larvae circled in white swimming close to the intake screen. This intake screen will not be used for the operation, but this image is of a 2-millimeter operating screen with a 0.5-feet-per-second intake velocity. The design criteria in the National Marine Fisheries Service guidance exceeds the requirements of federal regulation minimizing impingement under the Federal Clean Waters Act for cooling water intake structures and California requirements in policies for the regulation of water intake systems. Both federal and state regulations require a maximum through-screen velocity of 0.5-feet-per-second to meet compliance standards for minimizing impacts due to impingement. The project water intakes are designed to operate at a 0.2-feet-per-second or less through-screen velocity. With regard to Dungeness crab, based on studies referenced and attached in the environmental impact report, it is unlikely that large numbers of Dungeness crab larvae would be subject to entrainment. The larvae that may occur in the vicinity of the intake are too large to be entrained by the 1-millimeter openings in the screen. Longfin smelt will be discussed further in the presentation.
Master Response 10 is with regard to fish feed. Commenters express concern about fish feed, including composition, potential feed contaminants, and pathogens in the feed and their impact on the environment, use of marine-derived ingredients in the feed, and the amount of feed used, and the potential GHG impacts from feed production. The most important response to all this is that there have been, is that there have not been impacts related to feed. Most of the concerns are related to what may happen with the effluent from the site, and this is addressed under marine discharge. The composition of feed can change over time, as can those who supply the feed. Feed ingredients and finished feed are subject to strict regulations under the Federal Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act to ensure they are not dangerous to feed stocks, pose a threat to human health, or cause damage to the environment. Greenhouse gas emissions associated with feed is beyond the scope of CEQA analysis. The facility producing the feed has been permitted and analyzed in its own location. The DEAR makes reasonable data-based assumptions regarding the quantity of food expected to be utilized by the facility and fully analyzes, discloses, and mitigates the environmental impacts associated with the project. Master Response 11 is concerning waste handling and disposal. Commenters raised concerns regarding waste handling, reuse, transport, and disposal of waste. Some requested additional information on the location of waste disposal, GHG concerns, local reuse opportunities, and demolition and construction of waste handling. Recology has provided the project with a capacity-to-serve letter indicating their capacity to accommodate fish waste at the Recology Oster Organics Facility in Wheatland, California. Processing co-products will be sorted during processing and stored in sealed, chilled-sealed containers. These materials will be maintained as food-grade products and shipped on an ongoing basis from the facility by truck. Chilled storage in sealed containers and regular removal mitigates environmental impacts by preventing spoilage and decomposition, odors, as well as growth and transfer of pathogens. Sludge filtrate will be recycled as compost and/or other uses such as fertilizer and biogas. Processing and handling of filtrate at NAFC's facility will take place in completely enclosed buildings. This allows odors or incidental spills to be contained and managed without significant environmental impact.
There was one modified mitigation measure, Bio-6A, pertaining to the entrainment of longfin smelt. This will be for the creation of spawning and rearing nursery habitat. Mitigation for longfin smelt was determined due to the potential impacts of entrainment through the use of the baywater intakes. Pile removal was originally proposed as mitigation for the special-status species. The ideology behind pile removal The ideology behind pile removal was that it was an appropriate mitigation measure in that it's overall, the removal of these creosote pilings and the Kramer Dock would largely contribute to bay habitat and water quality improvements and the proliferation of marine species as a whole. Benefiting adult longfin smelt would in turn benefit the species populations. A letter from Fish and Wildlife expressed concerns that this mitigation did not address the appropriate life stage for longfin smelt. Impacts would be to larval longfin smelt, and therefore pile removal in open water may not fully mitigate for take. CDFW recommended that we implement habitat creation for the juvenile longfin smelt in the form of spawning and rearing habitat within fresh or brackish waters of Humboldt Bay. The mitigation for longfin smelt has been modified to reflect habitat creation on a one-to-one basis, utilizing formula for area required per spawning female and egg production per adult female. LFS are known to spawn and rear in fresh and brackish waters of Humboldt Bay, as previously stated. This mitigation measure requires the habitat creation within fresh and brackish waters. This does not change or alter findings in the Environmental Impact Report because of the net benefits resulting from habitat creation.
There was a, so as we stated before, there was, the FER was prepared. And we surrendered comments and then, and Arata also was prepared for this project. On the Arata, the table of contents, I think you have this. The table of contents was not correct in the staff report. This has been solved. And then the, the number, the size of the facility says 600 and, 690,000 square feet. The solar array should be 657,000 square feet. And there was also a sentence relocated, so that, that's the consist of the Arata that you have.
I'm just going to jump in here real quick. We did modify the conditions. That's in the supplemental to you that you received today. A couple of conditions didn't have numbering, so you'll notice that they're, they've been renumbered. Two of the conditions have been modified. One of the conditions was just to remove a reference to 10%. The other modification to condition, I believe it's 19, identified, it moved the sentence. And it just basically was modified for clarity. It, it didn't change the meaning at all. So we just wanted to point those out to you.
Trip, do you mind pulling up the presentation again on the same slide? Humboldt County Planning Department is recommending approval, approval on a basis that this is a principally permitted coastal-dependent industrial use. All environmental impacts have been mitigated to a level of less than significance. This would contribute to a cleanup of an existing brownfield site in our community. And there is conformance with the local coastal plan, the Humboldt Bay Area Plan. Were available for questions.
All right, there's, we're going to make the question short because we're going to have more presentations and then we'll have lots of question time after all of them. So Peggy.
So I'd like to ask about the tsunami plan. You talk about protecting the building and the fish, but what protections are going to be in place or mitigation to protect the workers?
So that's a great question. And part of the plan is that there is a refuge within that northern building, the large grow-out building. That building will be designed to withstand the 2,500-year event. It will take on the brunt of any tsunami wave. And the upper area of the building will be designed as a refuge area, not only for the employees of the site, but also for people who are in close proximity. So rather than the current tsunami refuge is to go to a top of a dune. I don't know if you recall seeing that exhibit, but there was a couple of white spots in there. Those are dunes that are above the level of the tsunami elevation. So what this would do is give people a place of refuge within a building.
Okay, because they have about 15 minutes to get there. So it would be nice to meet someone with that knowledge that it is a safe place to escape to and that it is high enough. Because I think, you know, from, you know, discussing tsunamis with people from Japan, they have very high structures that are concrete that are like parking garages that everyone can get to and drill constantly every year, make sure that the employees are well-versed in how to get to those sites and how long it takes to get to those sites should be built into the mitigation because you really only have a few minutes to get to the site. So I'd like to see that there's a little bit more than go to a dune or, you know, maybe stay in the building and hope the water doesn't get in.
All right, Josh, you had asked if we would see if Thomas and Brian were getting, able to hear us and if they could speak back. So we'll do a little test here before we move on. Thomas, can you hear me?
I can hear you completely, so if you can hear me.
Yes, we can now. And Brian, are you there as well? He may have left us, but can't win. All right, well, at least we have sound. That's great. All right, so Noah.
Thank you. Thanks for that presentation. And I do have one question I want to ask now, even though I know we have more presentation to come, because it might be something that I'd like the subsequent presentation to touch on. You explain, and the staff report explains, that this is a phased project with Phase One and then Phase Two. What I didn't see in the staff report, I didn't hear in your report though, and I'm wondering if it's, exists and just hasn't been explained is, are there, is there a sort of checkpoint that's taking place between Phase One and Phase Two? By which I mean, are there some performance standards that are going to need to be met based on the buildout to that point, based on the impacts as measured and monitored to that point that would need to meet certain thresholds in order to proceed? And if they don't meet them, perhaps would require certain different modifications or remediations to take place in order to go forward?
So I'd like to have a little more clarity on the question. There, there clearly are, and that's one of the conditions we just modified, was to have a checkpoint between what's Phase Zero, which is the demolition remediation work and the issuance of construction permits, that everything needs to be done appropriately.
Okay. Maybe I wasn't hearing that clearly. But, but I'm particularly interested at the point after Phase One and Phase Two, before proceeding to Phase Two, because as I understand it, at Phase One, we will have a buildout of all of the ancillary, you know, not only will the remediation, demolition, and construction have taken place, but we will have a buildout of the facility to the point where fish are being produced. Is that correct? And it will just not be at the full capacity that Phase Two buildout would get to. It would be something like half of the capacity. And so I guess what I'm wondering about is at that stage in the process, when we are already producing fish, you know, already all the way at the point of, you know, producing the full lifecycle of fish, will there be some monitoring measures that need to be met about the, the discharge from the outfall particularly? And that's, that's the one in particular that I'm wondering about that need to be sort of proved out before we scale up to the Phase Two level of capacity?
Thanks for that question. The, the interesting part about that, and this is one of the things we've tried to spend a little time here, is that there are many different agencies who are responsible for this project. And monitoring the water quality, approving the means by which the water quality is maintained is not within the purview of the county. What we have done with the EIR, though, is that worked with the applicant, worked with the regional board, based upon public comment, to develop a robust sampling system to develop a good understanding of what the baseline water quality is two years before operation. And so basically what would happen there is that once they start obtaining permits for the demolition, they're going to start water quality sampling. And then that information will be then available to the regional board to compare future water quality sampling against. So then we've also required, as a condition, but it was actually something offered by the applicant, to have three years of sampling after the, the buildout occurs. And then that information is then used by the regional board in their issuance of their NPDES permit and the renewal of that permit. Those are typically only good for five years. So that's something that will be looked at and reevaluated by the regional board.
Okay, well, thanks for that. And I, I think we'll, we'll probably have more opportunity to come back to this. So I'll, I'll just take your answer. Thank you for that. And also I just want to say, acknowledge that this is a project that has gone above and beyond what was required of it in many measures environmentally. And I applaud the applicant for that. I applaud that they have worked hard to, to, to really create a clean project that would set a new standard in many ways and that we, as a county, have put a lot of robust conditions on it. I, I just see our job up here as trying to make sure that those conditions are totally adequate within the bounds of what's feasible to, to make this the best project it possibly can be. Thank you.
All right, Melanie has one question, and then we're going to move on to the second presentation. And we're going to get through all the presentations, then do questions. I didn't get to say that Peggy jumped the gun on me, so, all right.
Well, thank you. This will be quick and through the chair. It's a question really about what the next presentations are. So I have a few questions regarding estrogen and what measures are going to be taken to look at the amounts of estrogen or the natural, naturally occurring form, which is found in fish feed and, well, everywhere. And I'm wondering if any of the presentations that you have prepared for us are going to go into more detail than that? And if not, I'm, I'm happy to ask them later as well.
So hopefully somebody will cover that.
Yeah, these, so these are going to be questions that are going to be addressed by the Nordic Aqua Farms presentation, and their team will be able to explain industry standards and Nordic standards for you.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to have a presentation. Oh, Thomas, go ahead, Thomas.
Being as you can hear me now, I think I should probably do the ex parte disclosure that I did a site visit way back. I have no idea sometime during COVID. And at one point in time, I had a brief conversation with the guy from GHD at a rock and mineral show, did not talk about the Nordic project, just talked about rocks. So that's it.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Mike.
So being this is ex parte, I did do a tour with the Nordic Aqua Farms people with groups, you know, with some, well, just a couple of commissioners. We didn't talk, we were listening. I was listening and taking it all in, so that's my ex parte.
And if I can just jump on and say, I also participated in one of the site tours with another commissioner, in which I heard the presentation on the site and learned a lot about the project in 2021. Thank you.
All right, so now we're going to move on to the next presentation, which is by Larry Otiker from the Harbor District.
Hi, I'm Larry Otiker. I'm the executive, I'm Larry Otiker. I'm the Executive Director of the Humboldt Bay Harbor Recreation and Conservation District. And I'm joined here with my Board President, Greg Dale, and also Ram Homeland, our project lead on this project. And so I'm here to talk about, you know, how we're revitalizing these coastal-dependent industries and really how we sort of got to this point. And so first off, the Humboldt Bay Harbor Recreation and Conservation District, just like the name says, that's what we do. Harbor Recreation and Conservation District. Essentially, we're a countywide special district and we're, my board is elected to the same jurisdictions as the Board of Supervisors. In other words, the Fifth District, Fourth, Third, Second, and First District were countywide, and we have jurisdiction over all of Humboldt Bay below the high-tide line. And we also have regulatory authority. We issue all permits under the, below the high-tide line. And in addition to that, under the Harbors and Navigation Code, we have a master plan, and that supersedes the county zoning regulations within the, below the high-tide line. In other words, we are the regulatory authority for Humboldt Bay, and we also have state tideland trust responsibilities that the state lands commission passed on to the Harbor District. And so effectively, we are also the landowners of Humboldt Bay. So we do the regulatory authority and we are essentially the landowner. So within the Coastal Act, the Coastal Act calls out and says, look, there's five ports within the California, and Humboldt Bay Harbor is one of those ports. And the Coastal Act basically says that we can have a master plan and that our master plan is essentially the functional equivalent to the county's local coastal plan. That's the way the Coastal Act works. We issue permits. We're used to dealing with all of these regulatory agencies, and we do it on a, on a daily basis. And so the Planning Commission usually doesn't see any of these permits that we're talking about. We usually just do them on our own, and we do our direct consultation with all of the regulatory agencies. Typically, we are the Sequel Lead Agency, and as was discussed, that's how this was initially started. We were the Sequel Lead on the intake system, and we're going to do our own permits. But we agree, it was best to do a consolidated EIR, and we think that that is absolutely the best approach for the public and the community and for the project as, as a whole. And as this, the Harbor District, we conduct all of our own public meetings, and we also do this direct consultation with all these regulatory agencies. So we've been working for a long time as this community, a long, long time, to really identify what is the best use for these coastal-dependent industrial industries. I mean, I can tell you, it's some of the most vacant, underutilized, contaminated, blighted pieces of property that we have in Humboldt County. When was the last time the commission saw a coastal-dependent industrial property? It is extremely, extremely difficult to find these projects and to bring these forward to, to permits. So we've identified really what we think are the clean, green, modern industries that we are right for our community and what we can do. And these are wood products, aquaculture, broadband, and offshore wind. And so within this, we've really looked within Humboldt Bay and identified all of the coastal-dependent industrial lands within the, the area and have developed sort of a coastal coordinated strategies with a variety of different regulatory agencies. We do not do this ourselves. We work with all of the regulatory agencies in the, in the state, the county, in the region to come up with our planning projects. We cannot do it alone, and no individual agency can make it happen. And so the county worked and created an EFID. And so I'm just, I don't, I'm just going to zip through this thing. And so basically, the EFID, what this is, an Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District. And so in June of 21, the Board of Supervisors adopted this for the entire Samoa Peninsula. And what this was, was going to be the revenue generation from these large projects. It's anticipated to generate $53 million over the life of the EFID that is going to go into infrastructure and really to encourage private investment, help fund, infrastructure improvement, and create jobs. Really, these coordinated approach of how can we clean up these properties, the blight, the infrastructure, and all these kinds of things. And the county adopted this EFID program. And so with this coordinated plan, we really focused on the ocean outfall pipe, saltwater intake, water distribution, fire, industrial, domestic water, wastewater treatment, electrical systems, building a new multipurpose dock, shoreline, sea level rise, the jetty reconstruction project that's happening right now, $22 million. Navigation and dredge channel and these aids to navigation, these buoys, these are big projects. And so Humboldt Bay is not a small bay. We are the second-largest bay in the state of California. We have huge assets and resources. These are not small assets that we have. These are huge. And so when you look at this, we developed a coordinated master plan. And you see, the Nordic Aqua Farms is, is to the upper left. The broadband cable landing is directly to the, I don't know if this has a highlighter or anything, but in the far upper left is where the broadband cables land. And the, the offshore wind terminal that we're proposing will include an additional 600,000 square feet of manufacturing spaces and the Town of Samoa project, which is well underway. Just yesterday, on our offshore wind project, we had a meeting with our Just yesterday, on our offshore wind project, we had a meeting with over 50 regulatory agencies, the Coastal Commission, Fish and Wildlife. We do this, we meet with them regularly, all the time on these projects. You cannot do anything in the bay without going through every one of these agencies. And so when we focus on aquaculture, really, we think about the intertidal, and that's kind of what you think about the Arcata Bay. These are in the mud flats, and then there's the subtidal. These are the things that are in the shorelines and mainly in the deeper water. And then there's the upland, and these are land-based, like the Nordic Aqua Farms project or, and they require, like, water and industrial water and also saltwater to happen. And they also require discharge back either through the ocean outfall or back into the bay. And then we also use our upland facilities to support some of the water-based aquaculture operations. And so just quickly, is, here is the pre-permitting projects. We have 21 acres. We did a headwaters grant. We have four leases in these intertidals. The reason why I bring this up is because we demand high-quality water. You cannot have aquaculture, whether it's land-based or in water, if we don't have water quality. And so we take these ocean outfall, the discharges into Humboldt Bay very, very seriously because we've invested heavily into the aquaculture industry, and the public, the Harbor District, and the aquaculture industry absolutely demands high-quality water. It is essential for the success of these industries. And so these are the existing permits that we have on baywater systems. We have, you know, I guess, six or seven intake systems that we've gotten in the last couple of years. Again, the process that we're describing on the intake system, we went through the exact same thing for each of these intake permits that we have in the bay. The master intake system is going to enable not just the Nordic Aqua Farms project, but other smaller users to tap into that saltwater intake system so we can help small businesses to be, to connect into it and really develop the aquaculture industry because they can't afford to do it on themselves. It's just way too expensive. And so we also have planned an aquaculture innovation facility that's going to be right next to this project, and we're working with Cal Poly Humboldt and CR. And CR wants to do an aquaculture certification program at the site, and that, this is going to happen directly adjacent to and coordinated with this infrastructure. As was discussed, there's existing saltwater well right in front of ours, and then the 40 million gallons a day of industrial water that go right to our property. These are big pieces of infrastructure, and any coastal city in the world would be impressed to have these types of resources that they have. These are huge, and they're large, and it takes large investments in order to really make them work. These are the original pictures from when the ocean outfall pipe was put in, the expansion, and Scott Thompson's dad actually took those when he was working on the site. And so within the ocean outfall, it goes out a mile and a half, and it has a 40 million gallons a day capacity. These are the currently permitted and planned uses for the ocean outfall pipe that we have. And this is really is a critical piece of infrastructure, and it was identified by economic and planning professionals as a core piece of infrastructure that was absolutely essential that we retain and maintain for the future of Humboldt Bay. So with the Town of Samoa, there was approved by this body, a brand-new wastewater treatment plant, water tanks, sewer, water, housing, all of that stuff is being developed and coordinated. And you'll hear about the leach field, and it's going to connect into this wastewater treatment plant, et cetera. Within the wastewater treatment plant is the Town of Samoa, it's all been installed. The wastewater treatment plant is there, and it connects directly to the ocean outfall pipe, and all of the regulatory agencies reviewed the discharge of the wastewater treatment plant, and that has been approved, and it goes out the ocean outfall. The Phase Two, which was approved by the County Board of Supervisors in January, expanded the potential to connect to the wastewater treatment plant into the entire Samoa Peninsula. And so that was all approved by the Coastal Commission and everybody to do that. Renewable energy is huge. We've been coordinating, and with the 18-megawatt biomass plant, we're very likely going to see that as a battery backup generation facility. The Harbor District has, used to have, the largest solar array in Humboldt County on the former pulp mill, 730,000 kilowatts. And we also own the 21-megawatt power station. And so creating an energy island such as what Nordic Aqua Farms is talking about doing is something that we've really been coordinating and planning for a long, long time. And so with the broadband cable, you know, again, Japan, Taiwan, Singapore, this has all been approved by the state lands commission, coastal commission. As a matter of fact, the ship is out right now pulling the cable. Right now, as we're speaking, it's pulling the table, and it's going to connect all the way over to the Redding area. This is huge for our region. Offshore wind in November, we're anticipating that in November, the Bureau of Offshore Wind Management is going to issue the leases on those. And the first phase, Humboldt, directly 21 miles offshore, and Humboldt Bay has been identified as that. So the broadband cables go directly through the offshore wind call area. Again, all this is coordinated, planned. This is not small-scale infrastructure we're talking about. Large-scale planned coordination at the national, state, local level that we're doing, and the Nordic Aqua Farms project is all part of that planned infrastructure. Again, when you look at our facilities and you look at what we're sort of planning as a region to do and how all this fits together, it takes a lot to really pull this off, and it's a significant amount of investment that it takes to do these kinds of projects. And so this was when the Secretary of Interior was here in July and really kickstarted off our projects. So what is the Coastal Commission think about all this stuff that we're doing here? Well, in the first place, the Coastal Act says that Humboldt Bay Harbor Recreation and Conservation District constitutes one of the state's primary economic and coastal resources and are an essential element of the national and maritime economy. And then they go on to say that existing ports, including Humboldt Bay, shall be encouraged to modernize and construct new facilities. This is what the Coastal Act directs us to do. So in April of 2022, this is what the Coastal Act, Coastal Commission said. The Chair of the Coastal Commission requested that the Harbor District come, and Rob gave a presentation to the full Coastal Commission. The staff reports to the Coastal Commission said the port of Humboldt Bay is getting ready to see significant port improvements, and that specifically, these improvements are going to come be for the aquaculture, fishing industry, as well as the offshore wind and broadband industries. And so when we really sort of hone in on the pulp mill, the former pulp mill, Redwood Marine Terminal Two, as we call it, this is an artist rendition, this was a huge feature in our landscaping in 1965. You can see how many cars that were there. 2,000 trucks a day went to these, this facility. 1990, the smokestack. All of us that have been here for a long time remember the smokestack and the impacts that have happened. 2003, then about 2008, 2013, the pulp mill shut down, and it was a dramatic impact on the community. Hundreds and hundreds of people lost their jobs. It was a major, major disruption for the community. And then the Harbor District took over the property. We invested with our partners, the Environmental Protection Agency and other people, we've invested over $22 million into environmental cleanup and restoration on the project. And as part of this, we created a vision of creating a national marine research and innovation park. This was the dream that we set out when we acquired the property. And as part of that, one of the major, major components of this was aquaculture. This was one of the major pieces that we looked at. And when we focused on aquaculture, these slides were all prepared back in 2015 when we did a large public input, and what should we do? And we were envisioning using the exact area where Nordic Aqua Farms is to develop the property for large-scale aquaculture operations, but also to have space available for small-scale, small startup aquaculture operations that could capitalize on the big investments that these industries are going to bring and revitalize this industry. And so when we bought the pulp mill, we did a study, and we basically said, what are the pieces of the infrastructure that we can adaptively reutilize? Because they're really valuable, we want to keep them, and which ones do we want to basically tear out and destroy? And so we really looked at the ocean outfall, the saltwater intake systems, and the 20-megawatt substation that we have as the core, core pieces of infrastructure. And those are what we really marketed, and as part of that marketing, that we went in and we were able to work and attract Nordic Aqua Farms to come here because they recognized that this is the premier site in the entire West Coast of the United States for aquaculture operations. I do not say that lightly. The infrastructure that you are evaluating here is the dream of almost any coastal community that you see. Fort Bragg had a two-day study session just two months ago on how do they attract aquaculture industry, looking at how do they create these infrastructure. San Diego, up in Washington, all of these places are looking at how can they build this infrastructure from scratch? We are able to adaptively reutilize this infrastructure, and therefore, the environmental impacts are greatly, greatly minimized. And so I wanted to provide you with a little bit of background information about how we got here and really what it has taken the community, not the Harbor District, the community, the governmental agencies, the resource, the resource agencies, the planning departments, and all of this, these years and years and years of effort. And this is really accumulating in the Nordic Aqua Farms project. And so I know you have a big decision ahead of you, and, you know, I know you're going to do the right thing for our community. Whatever you ultimately decide will be the right decision. And so I thank you for the time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Normally, we'd take a break about this time, so we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and we'll have a presentation by the applicant, and then we'll get to some public comment, so. Five minutes. We're going to get the meeting going. Very good, buddy. Please take your seats.
I like you.
Okay, let's, let's get rolling.
Recording in progress.
Welcome, Brenda. Go ahead.
Thank you. Is this on?
Oh, yeah, just bring it down.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Commissioners. I think earlier you had a question about estrogen. If you wouldn't mind, I could proceed with my presentation, and if you'd like, we could address that after. Thank you.
Please.
Is it close enough?
You'll have to yell.
No? Okay.
He's going to try and turn.
I'll try.
Just do your best.
Okay. So as most of you know, my name is Brenda Chandler. I'm the interim CEO and CFO of Nordic Aqua Farms. I'm here tonight to speak about our project. So before we get started, I would like to address, we'd like to begin by acknowledging that our proposed project will sit on the land of the Wai'ap peoples, who include the Wai'ap tribe, Bear River Rancheria, and Blue Lake Rancheria. Wai'ap peoples continue to remain in relationship to these lands through ceremony, culture, and stewardship. They are the principals, if not only the, of not only the history of this area, but also in continuing knowledge of this place. We recognize that as we move forward in this place and this land, our responsibility is not limited to this acknowledgement. We will strive to do our part in its stewardship and appreciate the continuing guidance of So I ask the question, why Nordic? Here, in this place, in this community, sustainable aquaculture is a solution, a solution to providing healthy protein in an environment sound balanced, in a sound-balanced way. Demand for this food is growing. Nordic can meet this demand in a sustainable, using an on-land, recirculating aquaculture process. In this place, your place, Nordic fits. Our commitment to the environment, the community, and the people who will work here is steadfast. We have assembled a team of experts and have a solid foundation of operating two farms and one hatchery, having designed and built one from the ground up while the other farm is currently undergoing a phase-two expansion. This is our foundation. We began in 2014. Our first commercial location in Denmark, both, as I mentioned, the farm and the hatchery. Then we built a third facility, our Fredrikstad farm. Our RAS, our recirculating design team, were pulled in, and they are, as I mentioned, currently working on a Phase Two expansion in, of the original Shishimi Royal. Fredrikstad and Shishimi Royal are both ASC certified, while Fredrikstad also holds a Global Gap certification. As part of our startup, we will also adopt a third-party certification and taking steps now to prepare for this future framework. Fredrikstad produces Atlantic salmon for the European market while Yellow Tail is produced at our Danish farm. The U.S. will focus on Atlantic salmon in both or on both the East and West Coasts. Nordic employees are best-in-class with extensive aquaculture, technology, as well as construction and development of large projects. We have an office now located in Samoa at the future farm site. We thought it better to be closer to the land that we will be renovating and reinvigorating into our future farm. We have onsite project management located here. He is supported by the rest of the U.S. team. It should be said that there are finite number of experienced RAS professionals in the world, and we're proud to say we have many of them already within the U.S. and the Nordics. So you may wonder why we selected Samoa for our West Coast RAS recirculating farm. It's simple. It's simply a nice place to live and work, and it has many attributes, most of which Larry has already spoken of as well. We're fitting into the Harbor District's longstanding vision of an aquaculture park on the peninsula. There's plenty of good and plentiful water here, fresh and saltwater, cool enough and at a temperature that is optimal for our fish and to avoid or have minimal temperature regulation. California has progressive renewable energy policies and that aligns frankly with our sustainability goals. We are within drivable population centers, enabling fresh product to be delivered to regional customers. Sorry about that. Likewise, Nordic is ideal for Samoa. With our commitment to our environment, our community, Nordic will safeguard the water used on the farm with industry-leading water quality standards. Ultrafiltration down to .04 micron screening will remove 99% of total suspended solids, BOD, and phosphorus, and with biofiltration, removing total nitrogen to at least 90% to best-in-class. Further, as you know, salmon can live in salt or freshwater. We have specifically chosen the more plentiful saltwater to be the primary water source for grow-out-after-smold, which minimizes the use of freshwater supply. Freshwater will be used in our hatchery processing and for sanitary use on the farm. Nordic will be seeking downstream partners for co-products utilizing our waste streams and avoiding landfills. Further, during construction, as much of the old infrastructure will be reused. Nordic's proximity to the regional markets means product will arrive days faster, which means less, more time for shelf life, more time for sales, less food waste. Nordic will operate the farm on 100% renewable and non-carbon energy, further voluntarily sourcing locally when feasible. And equally important, installing 15 acres of a rooftop solar array. In the community, already Nordic has shown its openness and its willingness to listen and adopt as many of the concerns that were voiced as possible. Our philosophy is to approach environmental and social goals with balance, not chasing one at the expense of another, but seeking an equilibrium among the many aspects and interests that makes our world vibrant. Before Nordic can build, we've already talked about that. We have, the site must- We have, the site must be remediated. The good news, however, is a fair amount of the material can be reused and some recycled. The outfall, intake, industrial water supply, power infrastructure will be refurbished and reused. Not to mention, the road in is already designed for industrial use. The steel will be recycled, concrete, brick, aggregate, crushed, and used for ground densification and to enhance the, which enhances the ground beneath our foundations. Any contaminants will be remediated, including asbestos, lead, and soils. In the end, the site will be cleaner, more modern, and, and fit better into its landscape. So, this is just a, a little bit of a picture of what it is today, as you look at it from Eureka. The vista will change dramatically with, with lower height. The, the colors will be chosen to blend into that line, that horizon. And you can see just basically the, the, the line across just sort of gives you a sense of, of what it would look like looking across. Before we leave the topic, though, of environmental, let's talk about the technology, aquaculture for the recirculating aqua, aquaculture. This is how, um, it's different than, um, a net pen operation, and it's, it's important to understand what, what those differences are. So, as we have spoken about, um, this is unlike a nut, nut pen, the salmon stay indoor for their entire life. Eggs through smolt are in the freshwater, the same as, as, as a net pen operation would be. The only major difference is our smolt will grow to 500 grams before we go from smolt to grow out. From there, salmon will move to grow out and remaining there until they reach harvest size. At harvest, they move to processing and then on out to the markets. While the salmon are with us, they are cared for to achieve optimal growth and health. A major and significant part of their life cycle is controlling their environment, the water quality, the biosecurity from pathogens and parasites, feed optimization, waste removal, water recirculation. Our fish can thrive in the environment we create for them. The intake, intake water is sanitized using UV light, the outgoing discharge using UV light, as well as during their stay in our tanks. Disinfecting water entering or exiting and during the stay, um, as mentioned earlier, is by using ultra-filtered, um, upon intake and discharged. So, moving to a slightly different topic. Turning to our community, we heard you. We have gone above and beyond, in some cases, and tried where we can to include your requests in our commitments to, to you where feasible. Some examples are the 100% renewable and non-carbon energy, making sure we were, we were adopting that early. The commuting alternatives and incentives, that's completely voluntary, that's an industrial road. We, we've gone above and beyond in accommodating, um, in accommodating. Maximizing and prioritizing local labor. And then, development programs, internships, more collaboration. As we spent, and then further, I'm gonna advance that. And then further, we've spent many days and hours meeting with you and collecting your feedback. As our quote from Henry Ford says, "Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress. Working together is success." You might wonder what the future will hold for employees and community partners after permitting. We think you need to do good to be good. Our involvement will continue. You'll see us through volunteering, sponsorships, giving programs, support where we can. Employees will be treated well and work in an atmosphere of collaboration, open communication, and teamwork. We want to be the employer in the neighbor everyone is proud of. Learning is another core value that we want to share. To not only share our experiences, but to foster interesting and lifelong teachable, memorable moments for students. Additionally, fostering further education in aquaculture helps not only us, but helps prepare students for the workforce in an aquaculture career. But also, to aid in research and development, and you heard Larry talk about the, the lab facility that will basically be co-located right next to the facility. It's gonna use the intake, it's gonna use the outfall, um, it's, it's very symbiotic, if you will. So, collaboration with higher education to make improvements in the field and the industry for the years to come. So, you might ask, um, at, what are the types of careers that we would expect? Nordic will employ an estimated 150 full-time employees across many areas of expertise. And I like to call it fish farmer to finance. It is envisioned the farm will handle all of its administrative, operational, in-house maintenance to meet, um, to meet its need, and it will meet its needs predominantly locally from local workforce. This does not even include the employment that will occur during construction. So, further, obviously, there's greater, much greater opportunities regionally. Further development of upstream and downstream industries that can develop and being a partner of Nordic into the future. So, I ask again, and our team hopes you agree, that Nordic Aqua Farms is the best fit for Humboldt County. From our strong foundation to our commitment to sustainable, balanced, environmental, and social values, and delivery of fresh, sustainably-produced food to the West. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions at this time? Okay? Thank you.
You're welcome. Would you like to, uh, address?
Go ahead. Just chance. Now, we're at that point.
Yeah, if you don't mind addressing the earlier question about estrogen, I know that it's typically not required to, you know, to look at that. Um, a lot of times, we have estradiol naturally occurring, uh, but a lot of the fish feed does have endocrine-disrupting qualities, and so, I was wondering if you had, uh, if you could go over what the plans are just to test, uh, the levels of that?
I'll start by answering part of the question, and then I'll defer to my colleague. So, um, the, the, the fish feed that's, would be tested, but also, um, even our systems within, uh, the, the recirculating, the UV, the, the, is basically going to start breaking down anything that might be, be coming in, um, even if it was present, um, in the feed. So, then I'll defer to my colleague.
Hello, my name's David Neusman, Senior Vice President for Nordic Aqua Farms.
Go ahead, bring that up.
Yeah.
It's directional.
My apologies. Um, we did, um, address this question to a point. CDFW asked this question in their letter, and it is addressed in the FEIR. We actually reached out to a fish reproductive endocrinologist by the name of Heather Hamlin. And she did address this, and she's examined this and looked through the rich, uh, the literature, and hasn't found any examples of, um, there being any disruptive properties. And what you're referring to is the, the ability of some of the, um, components of soy to mimic estrogen. The industry has largely turned its back on soy as an ingredient because of deforestation issues in South America, and so that, uh, the favor of use of that ingredient has dramatically fallen off, and the entire country of Norway, um, actually has, has solidarily, uh, turned its back on the use of soy in fish feed. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, and, uh, almost. And then, are you going to be testing for levels of, uh, estradiol at all?
Us personally, no, but the, the testing that would be occurring at the feed factor in the plant, we do have the ability to influence the formulation and the things that go into our feed, and we will be, um, exerting that influence to make sure that it's the most appropriate and healthiest feed for our fish and for the environments, and those are, we have a very large, uh, sustainability and key index, um, for our use of feed, which is laid out in the FEIR under the master response for fish feed.
Oh, thank you. I actually meant in the effluent water. I'm sorry, I should have been more.
Um, testing in the effluent water for, for hormones, um, that is not one of the things that we have laid out under the current plan. Um, we have looked at, um, using acoustic dopppler current profilers, um, to basically validate the dilution study, and, and a large parameter of nutrient profiles and, uh, the use of biological surveys. Um, those are some of the voluntary measures and, and that are currently laid out in there. Um, that's not something that's normally looked at, um, and none of the literature that, um, Dr. Hamlin has reviewed has, has revealed any issues, um, or levels that would be of concern through her extensive career writings.
Okay, so you're not testing for estradiol in any of your other facilities?
No, we currently do not, um, nor do we have current plans to do at this time.
Thank you. And then, finally, uh, had a question about neo-females. Would that, uh, be in the plans, and would that fall under females according to your definitions?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear that.
Yeah, uh, neo-females genetically? I was wondering if that would fall under your definition of, of females?
Neo-females?
Yes.
So, we are looking at using an all-female stock, um, so I don't know if that meets the definition of what you're, you're looking at, so they're, they are specifically used all females so that we don't have the issue of them being reproductively viable because there's strictly the female stock available in that facility. Um, the facility itself is completely escape-proof.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for stat, or for the applicant before we open this up for public comment? Go ahead, Noah.
If I may ask a quick one, um, it's just kind of a follow-up on what I asked before, but I, I'm interested in the timing of the proposed monitoring of the effluent discharge. I do appreciate that, that you've proposed this, uh, and it's now a condition of approval, that you would do the baseline monitoring before any of the, uh, construction, uh, facilities constructed, and then you would commence monitoring of that effluent discharge according to a number of parameters after the full build-out at phase-two.
Actually, what we are going to do is monitor base, establish baseline and continue to monitor at the very beginning of discharge. So, we will continue to do so.
Oh, okay.
All the way through phase-two plus-three.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. I'm glad to know that you're doing that.
Thank you. Any other questions before we open it up for public comment? All right. Now, the fun part. Okay. So, now, we're gonna have public comment. Um, I'm gonna ask you to get up in, in about groups of three and be lined up so that we can just keep going through fast. Uh, I will call off the groups of three. I've got the list of the first, I don't know, 25 or so here, and I'll get the rest of them as we go. And then, we'll go to the phones after we go through a bunch of the, uh, the people here in the audience. Uh, I'll try to split it up both tonight, 'cause I don't think we're gonna get through everybody looking at the numbers. So, if you'd like, come up, you're gonna get three minutes, and I will cut you off. Okay? So, please try to be respectful of that. There's a timer that'll show up that you can watch and see where you're at. Okay, the first three, pardon me? John Schaefer. Go ahead. Well, that's, he was, he was up for public comment that was not on this issue. We're gonna go back to that at the end. We, we will go back and get him at, at the end of the meeting. Yeah, but that was for a different public comment. So, the first is Patrick Ballou, then Scott Dottry, and Brian Bishop. Then Ken Wallen, Steve Russenberg, and Frank Rojas. Please come on up.
Hi. Yes, Patrick Boylow. Um, I'm the Deputy Political Director of the Operating Engineers Local Three, and I just wanted to, um, talk to you a little bit. There's many of my colleagues, many of our apprentices and journeymen here, here tonight to talk about their, the impact of this project on them. I just wanted to talk to you, first of all, about the dignity of work. I'm a second-generation operating engineer. My dad would come home at night, and he'd talk about the projects he was working on that day. And when we were driving around, he'd talk about the projects. He'd see something they'd worked on, and he'd tell us about it. There's a gentleman back there that, when, uh, Larry from the Harbor District was talking about the pipeline, I heard him say, "Hey, I worked on that, too." This is gonna be an example of a project that people are gonna be able to say, "I worked on that," and be really proud about that. They're gonna, it's gonna be something that's in their community, something that they can show their kids, and, uh, something that you can see a fish at the fish, at the supermarket and go, "Hey, I worked on building that project." That's putting fish on, that's not, it's not only putting, uh, food on the table, it's literally putting food on the table for our members. And I just wanted you to take, uh, take that into account when you're, you're serving this project. Remember, your staff really thoroughly, you know, reviewed the project? They, they looked at how, how much this was gonna influence everything, and they came to you with a recommendation to pass it, and I'd really like you to follow the staff recommendation and, and permit this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Scott Dottry.
Uh, Scott Dottry, I, uh, member of Operating Engineers Local Three. Just wanted to, like, just support, support this project. Opportunity to work locally. Right now, I'm driving hour and a half, two hours to go to work, and it'd be really nice to be able to work at home, and I think it'd be a good, uh, economic opportunity for our community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Howdy. My name's Brian Bishop. I'm born and raised here in Humboldt County, and God, I love Humboldt County. Nice. But unfortunately, in 1980, there was no work up here. I ended up having to go to the Bay Area. I worked 20 years in the Bay Area, coming home every other weekend to see my family. And these young kids shouldn't have to do that. This job is, they're just, project here is gonna have good construction job, it's gonna have employment for 150 people. Part of that 20 years I was down south, I taught hazardous waste removal. These guys, we got, we got a brownfield gonna get cleaned up. We need a lot more of that going on. But I want, I hope you folks are, support, we're, recommend, head to the staff's recommendations and then vote in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next three, Ken Wallen, Steve Russenberg, and Frank Rojas.
Ken Wallen, born and raised here, and I really feel this project is necessary, and we need to show Nordic Aqua Farms that we appreciate them picking Humboldt County, and we need to show our IQ level is high enough to approve this as soon as possible. And they wouldn't have picked Humboldt County if they didn't have the confidence in our IQ level, I can tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Rosenberg. There's, uh, probably a lot of operating engineers here that aren't gonna like what I had, have to say. Even Kenny Wallen, he's a friend, he's a former client. I was an attorney here. I've lived here 73 years. This project, uh, in my opinion, is not in the best interest of this area for many reasons. First of all, Nordic is a foreign enterprise. It's designed to compete directly against our commercial fishing, commercial fishing industry here. Its legal structure, a limited liability corporation, means its parent company is insulated against claims against it, other, so, so that only their assets are subject to claims. This is a massive project. It has the possibility of severe damage and also failure. So, I wanna make sure that we're not left in a position like we were with the pulp mills when they pulled out and left the mess that currently needs to be cleaned up. Now, environmentally, the Environmental Impact Report, in my opinion, fails to adequately address significant issues. First, what will be the effect on First, what will be the effect on endangered salmon of withdrawing an extra 2.5 million gallons of water a day from Mad River? Second, what will be the effect of the utilization of over 20% of the existing electric supply of the area currently and for the foreseeable future powered by fossil fuels? Third, what will be the effect of the huge amount of truck traffic on our already overburdened and ill-maintained highway system? Fourth, what will 10 million gallons, what will be the effect of the use of 10 million gallons a day of bay water on its estuarine life? Fifth, what will be the effect of the competition to our local commercial fishing industry? Sixth, and importantly, what will be the effect of the massive amount of effluent, even though treated, being deposited in the ocean in sensitive areas for salmon, which, as you all know, are endangered here, and other marine life in the bay? The spreading of parasitical and viral disease from Atlantic salmon farming to Pacific Coast salmonoids is well documented. Now, I understand this is a land project, but we still have effluent going out into the ocean. No amount of filtering will prevent this, let alone a complete system failure. What is the condition of the 60-year-old effluent pipe? How can the effluent not end up in the beach and in the bay considering the northwesterly prevailing swell directed not only at the northeasterly inclined shoreline, but at the northwesterly facing entrance of the bay, which large tides deposit its water as much as eight miles offshore?
Your time is up, sir. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you.
Everybody gets the same amount of time. No clapping, please.
Good evening, folks. Thanks for being here. My name's Frank Rojas. I'm a Local Three member, 35-year member. I live on that peninsula, and I've traveled over half my career all over the country but here. So I hope this goes through, and due diligence, we'll all do our best to kick ass and take names. And right on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next three are Jack Norman, Bill Burns, and Harry Herkert. I apologize if I get anybody's name wrong. I'm trying to read your guys' handwriting.
I get to take this mask off?
Please do.
Right here, anyway. I'm Jack Downin with Climate Crisis Humboldt, Climate Crisis HSU, Cal Poly. There's so much here. Never, I'm a workman my entire life, 90-years-old. I've worked my, you know, the entire way. I'm not against jobs. That's not the point. It's just like, what I like to do here is to allow people to understand that this is like two things going on at the same time. It's like a tsunami coming in, to, you know, a huge tsunami coming in, and us reaching out and doing our normal thing as we do every day. And this is what we're doing here. We're doing this normal thing every day. You know, thing about more projects, more business as usual. It would be wonderful under certain circumstances, but we're living in the age of climate crisis. There's no way around it. It was sounded over two generations ago, alarm, a real alarm, saying, just like if you don't move on this, there's gonna be huge consequences. I didn't make that up, okay? We all know it in our hearts. We all know we have to do something about it, but we don't understand that we're just one little node on the map of the United States, one little node with our planning commission, doing our little, little finding and mitigation and all that, while we're not taking consideration, into consideration, that there are something like 4,000 to 5,000 cities, something like ours or greater than ours, with their planning commissions, all doing the same thing. New projects, new mitigation, a little bit more added. We have no answers yet to climate crisis, but we're adding all the time. And that's just in the United States. We have thousands upon thousands of little nodes doing their little bit every day. Do you understand that? I'm not, I'm pleading with you because we need you to understand. This is a critical situation. The tsunami is here. It's happening. The fires, everybody's like, oh, the Greenland, you know, it's melting, then we can get to the gases underneath. No, no, this is not the point. We have to begin to really mitigate the entire situation with real projects and real understanding that we have to limit ourselves. Our whole science has to be limiting ourselves. Not that this is not a good project. It's, in other times, it would be, yes, let's do that, but we're living, we're living in a limited world. We can't get around that. And it's really here. It's cast upon us, and we have to make some decisions. You people have so much, you know, in your mind, and so much to deal with in this situation. And I'm glad to have the chance to see you and talk to you because, you know, I respect your consciousness, I respect your choices. Look at this seriously. Look at what is happening.
Your time is up. Thank you, sir.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you. Bill Burns.
I'm Bill Burns. I'm a resident and a taxpayer in the city of Eureka. I've been here for 36 years. I raised my family here. And right now, the biggest export we have out of Humboldt County is our children. All of my children had to go out and go to work someplace else. You know, which is, it's a little unjust to our people here, but anyway, I support this project, and the sooner we can get it off the ground, the better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next three are Harry Herkert, Jason Skinn, Olbers, and Dave Kirk.
Good evening, Commission. You're gonna hear a lot about people, I'm an operating engineer, resident. You can hear a lot about people having to leave the area to go to work, but I'm not gonna talk about them, I'm gonna talk about Nordic. I think somebody made a comment to me not too long ago that Terrigen could have learned a lot, or Nordic should learn a lesson from Terrigen. I think Terrigen needs to learn a lesson from Nordic. They've come in and done over and beyond what was required. And for a sustainable industry here in our port, I think this is a good kickoff project. Where our, if, you guys have been out on a tour, they're taking a dilapidated contaminated pulp mill, and they're gonna turn it into a viable industry. And I think they've done their due diligence on all areas, on the EIR, and are gonna be a good neighbor, and going forward, gonna be really supportive of the community. And as far as, you know, I'm a Eureka resident, and I go out and catch my salmon in the ocean. That's what I prefer. If I have to go in the supermarket and buy it, I always look for wild-caught. Sorry, Beverly, but I don't think I'm your target demographic. But as far as a sustainable, reputable company coming into our port and doing their due diligence, and I think gonna be a good neighbor, and they're not coming in here just for the next, you know, three or four years, they're here for good. And it's good to see that we're attracting that kind of, you know, industry. We need it. The port's falling apart, we need sustainable industry, we need jobs back. And they're gonna supply 300 construction jobs, living wage jobs, and then going forward, 150 full-time jobs that are also gonna be living sustainable wages. We're not talking about minimum wage here, which we have enough of here. There are gonna be sustainable jobs. So I implore you, please pass this project. Do it tonight. Let's get the ball rolling. I wanna come home to it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Jason? I'm not gonna try and botch it again. Go ahead.
My name is Jason Schenkerberg. I'm a Local Three contractor and a member, and I think I'm in full support of this because in order for me to find work right now, I have to leave out of town. I got three kids at home, and I, sometimes I don't see them for, I'll come home a weekend a month, so I just wanna say I'm in full support of it.
Thank you. Next three are Dave Kirk, Colby Smart, and John Toth.
Yeah, my name is Dave Kirk. I'm a second-generation operating engineer, so many of our colleagues behind us, and as you've heard from a lot of them, the travel that we do to work, and the generations coming up are having to leave our community and take them dollars elsewhere to make a living. And this project is a clean project, a strong economic project, and a long-lasting project for Humboldt County, and I hope you guys take that in consideration, their decision that you have to make. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, my name is Colby Smart. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services at the Humboldt County Office of Education, and I'm here to express my strong support for this project. There are many reasons for this, but first and foremost, Nordic has proven that they are committed to the health of our whole community. They have displayed a keen interest in getting to know our schools and youth. Nordic staff have given talks, presentations to local science, or science classes. They have given tours and have been willing partners in exploring just how this type of industry can fit into our current technical education. So Humboldt County, in many of our schools, we already have aquaponics programs, but they're just in their infancy. And I believe part of the reason why they are in their infancy is because kids who take these realize that there's not a lot of opportunity to utilize these skills coming directly out of high school or transitioning to higher education. This changes that. And I really believe that, you know, the idea of going above and beyond has been stated many times. Nordic really has done that. And so I believe, finally, that this project represents a critical piece in that school-to-career pipeline, and I really, really endorse it. And I guess, finally, I will say that Nordic Aqua Farms does represent a healthy and sustainable diversification of our local economy. That's something that as a community, we've struggled with over the last 20 to 30 years. Their business philosophy, their product, and their demonstrated commitment to our youth and local workforce, I believe is really in line with our values as a community. And when we think about the idea that this is just one small part of a very large problem, I think that's the, part of the exciting nature of this project, because Humboldt County does have a history of innovation, sustainability, and really a commitment to maintaining what we hold valuable about, valuable about living in a rural community and addressing what doesn't work. So with that, I just really appreciate it, and I hope you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Toth. I'm an apprentice with the Operating Engineers, and I just wanted to say I support this because all the jobs it's gonna bring to the area. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three are Kyle Skillings, Josh, or John Thomas, and Landry Leonard, I think.
Hi, my name is Kyle Skillings. I work for Mercer Frasier Company, and I, too, for years, have traveled out of the area to work for a living wage job. And I support this project because it will be, bring living wages, wages to Humboldt County. Thank you.
Thank you. John Thomas?
John Thomas with Mercer Frasier Company, operating engineer. I fully support this project and the jobs it'll bring to the community.
Thank you. Landry Leonard?
Landry Leonard, Mercer Frasier Company, 324 Local Labor Union, and I support this project. Thank you.
I think it's Leonard Hearsue. I'm sorry. And Paul Belly and Ken Kurwitz.
Apologize for my writing. My name's Leonard Anderson. I'm Humboldt County native, fifth generation. My father was a member of Operating Engineers like I am myself, and I do appreciate all the science that you guys have been talking about, not that I understand it all, but I'm more of the job side of the debate. And as it is, in 1974, when I turned 15-years-old, the world population was 4 billion, and November of this year is slated to reach 8 billion. And like it or not, growth is happening, and demand for jobs, demand for food is happening. And I wish all you luck in a rational decision, and I'm in favor of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Paul? Paul Belly? Belly? Berry? No? Any Paul? All right, Ken Kurwitz. Lee Romberg. Rompower, Rom, Rom something. I will, then John Egan and Joan Romo. Joan Romo, excuse me.
Lee Chamberlain. I'm an operating engineer, here to show my support for this. It's carbon zero, it's local food that we're gonna raise right here. It's everything that we need, and I support it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, John Egan moved up to Humboldt County about 25-years ago to raise a family, and I've watched projects come to Humboldt County over the last 25-years that I thought were very valuable projects, and I think we've had a culture of no on every one of them. We sent away the LNG, the Terrigen, the, even the balloon track that I know wasn't a county project. We, I look at that, and I tell my son, when he was this big, and that project was starting to, they were bringing it forward, I said, it's gonna look exactly, they're gonna send him away, and it's gonna look exactly like it does in blight when you're my age. And that's what we did. This is a great project. We have, we have to change the culture and bring these companies here. This company's done a great job. Please approve them and bring more companies here. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Hunterlock, Stephen McKinney, and Rod Macbeth.
Thank you, guys, for a great presentation, both Nordic County staff and Larry, one heck of a job. Look, I'm kinda like the cleanup guy. I'm Jeff Hunterlock with the Operating Engineers Local Three. I'm the district representative here. All the guys are, most of the guys are my members and gals, and I, I know a lot of, few names you called, they didn't come up because they have to, like, probably a two- or three-hour drive in the morning to get to work again. It's kind of a hard, hard sell to get here and speak on behalf of the project. But I'll tell you this, my wife, she's an operating engineer. There's no work here. I mean, there's work, obviously, they're here, but within two hours. She's an apprentice, she's in Chico, California, been over there for two years, working over there. I mean, we get to see each other on the weekends, probably should go get another career, right? But no, it's a good career. And I just support these guys. I'm so glad, you know, the people that don't get up and speak, it's just because maybe they're shy. I'm not shy. You know, our apprenticeship is grand. The company had done such a great job with community outreach, you know, union, non-union, it didn't matter, they hit all the balls out of the park. And I'm grateful, and I think we need long, long-term investment here, and they bring it. It's a good start off. I hope you vote and support this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joan Romo, I think you're back there. I saw you get up, so please come up.
Thank you.
Sorry that I'm herding people through so fast. We're just, wanna get everybody up.
I'm Joan Romo. The following quote is taken from the National Marine Fisheries Service guidelines. Where possible, intake should be located, intake should be located offshore to minimize fish contact with the facility, with the facility. Water velocity from any direction toward the screen shall not exceed the allowable approach velocity. Where possible, locate intakes where sufficient sweeping velocity exists, and this minimizes sediment accumulation in and around the screen, facilitates debris removal, and encourages fish movement away from the screen face. Moving locations for intake of saltwater offshore will reduce adverse impacts on entrainment on Dungeness crab, longfin shmit, herring, and other marine organisms using the estuary habitats of Humboldt Bay. If you break down the water consumption of 10 million gallons, gallons of saltwater per day, intake for a 10-year time period, the total amount of water used looks something like 36.5 trillion gallons of water. It would be hard to believe that this much water being used from a saltwater intake would not have a detrimental impact on aquatic environment. Such long-term saltwater transfers will affect the ecological stability and saltwater habitats of Humboldt Bay to the extent that the continuation of current water supply practices may result in significant and irreversible damage to the ecosystems. Moving the intake offshore would minimize fish contact with the facility. What makes a good scientific model accurate? model accurate? The rough answer is that a good scientific model accurately explains a lot of data with few assumptions. The fewer the assumptions, and the better the fit to data, the better the model. All models are approximations. Assumptions, whether implied or clearly stated, are never exactly true. All models are wrong, but some models are useful. So the question you need to ask is not, is the model true? It never is. But is the model good enough for this particular application? The EIR states that potential impacts due to entrapment at the proposed intake locations will be refined using the empirical transport model. The EIR states that the impact assessment may be refined once the sampling is complete and final modeling is done. But the EIR states for purposes of disclosure and mitigation for feasibility, the numbers provided are sufficient to demonstrate that the potentially significant impact to entrapment can be mitigated to a less-than-significant impact. The EIR also states the mitigation recommendations have no extensive data available on larval-fish links from Humboldt Bay. The EIR uses assumptions in constructing the ETM model, including the use of data from San Francisco Bay. The intended use of the ETM example was to provide approximate estimates of the intake losses to planktonic organisms using example organisms with a range of larval durations. It makes a massive assumption in this modeling data since no extensive data on larval-fish links from Humboldt Bay are available, and only data from a study-
Your time is up, ma'am.
-in San Francisco Bay was used. Humboldt Bay is not San Francisco Bay.
Thank you. Stephen McKinney, Rob Macbeth, and Aaron Robinson.
Hello, my name is Stephen McKinney. I'm an apprentice with Mercer Frasier. I drive two and a half hours every other day to come to work. It would be a blessing for you guys to pass this project. I live in Gasky, California. I'm going to sell my house if this project does pass, and it'd be a pleasure to not drive two and a half hours every other day driving a full-size diesel truck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, folks. Rob Macbeth from Eureka. A half a billion dollars. That's what these people are talking about investing here in our community. Think about that. A half a billion dollars. And I don't think they'd put that money at risk if they had a shaky project. They have to jump through the hoops of every state agency, every federal agency. Folks have brought up concerns, and if they don't meet the standards that the government has put out, they're very strict, they're not going to build a project. We've also heard a lot of talk about folks having to drive to work, and that's a really big thing. But there's different phases to this project. We've got the build-out, which is huge, and it's going to provide a lot of work for a lot of folks, a lot of them in this room. Then we have the operation of the project, where it's going to be 150 full-time, high-paying, good jobs that are going to come out of this, and they're going to bring up a lot of other projects that are going to tail to this. Then, in addition to that, there's the things that will come up from the other industries that can co-locate there, the things that will go on with the colleges. I think if we don't pass this project, we're missing a huge opportunity. And I implore you to pass the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Robinson, Katiel Kaver, and Corey Albritton. I hope I'm getting close.
Good evening. My name is Corey Albritton. I'm an Operating Engineer, Local 3 member. I'm asking the council to please consider approving this project because Humboldt County is in desperate need of long-term, good-paying jobs that Nordic Aqua Farm project would produce. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Jonathan Flyer, Larry Dos, and Rosa Cela Legarez.
We are in a crisis right now. The world is at war. We are reliant on foreign countries for our food. In many cases, we have the opportunity to produce American jobs, American food, whether it's a foreign-owned company or not. We're going to eat that food right here in Humboldt County. Humboldt County loves to say, you know, what is it, think locally, act globally, or act locally, think globally? We have to stop hiding and saying that we're not part of this world. We can produce food here. We can ship it out to, I think, something like 40 or 50 million people within 11 hours of here. We need to feed our people here. We need to create jobs here in Humboldt County, and what a great opportunity for us. And I encourage you to vote on this and vote yes. It's something that we need here in Humboldt County for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Dos, Rosa, and Kent.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Larry Dos. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I was a, or I am a former harbor commissioner with Humboldt Bay, and I had the honor to meet the initial Nordic team when they first came to Humboldt County, and how exciting it was to listen to their plans somewhat on cocktail napping, so to speak, you know, in conversation. And the love that they have for Humboldt County by just being in the area for just a few days. I'm very encouraged by the spirit of their company, and again, with the love of this area. I think it's a great opportunity to put Humboldt County on the map, to kind of identify Humboldt Bay as the direction that this community would like to go with organic food production, clean, green. And Humboldt Bay is the, has got the largest amount of eelgrass in California. And eelgrass is the natural filter that the ocean uses. If you think back, and I'm going to jump on just because of the timing here, I'm going to jump around a couple of different things. There's hundreds of reasons to say yes to this project, and we obviously don't have time to go through those 100 reasons, and I don't want to either. But two big ones to think about, just two big ones to think about. One is, the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District is going to be providing the fresh water from the Mad River. If you think back to when there were two Pultenil's that were running here full steam, they were using much more water than what Nordic is proposing, just a small percentage of the water that was once used by the Pultenil's. The state of California will have the ability to come check our community's water rights in a few years. If we're not using it, we may lose it. It's not really a threat, but if we don't use it, if we don't demonstrate as a community that we're going to use that water, they have the right to decide what happens to that water. That water might just get shipped out of the area. So that's a big thing to think about. The other thing to think about is, this community owns two effluent pipes. One is active. One's been maintained by the Harbor Commission since its inception. That outflow pipe is in great shape and is ready to be used. Its capacity is able to handle many Nordic projects. But there's other projects, and there's other municipalities around the bay that will use that effluent pipe in the future. It might be 20 years from now, might be 50 years from now. But there's approximately 30 million gallons a day that could be used. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Kent Swawsky.
Hi, my name is Rosalia Legarez. This is completely an environmentally unsound project, 100%. If you're not on the Board of Exploitation, you will vote against this. What's going on in Belfast, Maine right now, the project up there has been halted because the city of Belfast is suing Nordic Aqua Farms for their inability to come forward with the proper easement on the conservation that was terminated. It was done illegally. So the Supreme Court is waiting on a case with Nordic Aqua Farms right now. It's also been discovered in the October issue of the Working Waterfront newspaper by John Kruger from Belfast, Maine, that government illustrates the strong corporate lobbying on Nordic's part with government contacts, and this industry is completely unregulated. It's 100% unregulated. This project has not been done before. The RSA, it's because of the fresh water here, and that's exploitation. Water is the new oil that private interests, private equity investors are seeking. And these private equity investors, they don't care about leaving the community in shambles and taking the money and running. The money now is nature. That's the grossest thing that's actually happening, is that the final frontier is let's exploit until we either kill ourselves, or can, like, make love to our money and bet or something. I don't get it. I don't get how any adult up here with any integrity can stand behind this whatsoever, whatsoever. We've been talking about this ever since I was born in 1981. If you're not about the money, and you're about honesty and science and caring about all of life, you will vote against this. I don't know how many of you have pockets in this, because anyone who reads about this, it's a straight-up no. It's so obvious. It's one plus one is two. We have a sun on planet Earth. It's so obvious unless you care about only money. I can't play with you all about how this is a good idea. Right now, in the oceans, where they're not exposing where they're getting their feed, they're getting it from places like Senegal, Africa, where every 30 seconds, someone dies of starvation. The Sardinella in Senegal have had to move 200 miles from where they're naturally living because the ocean has gotten so warm there. So it's a boom-and-bust industry, because even their feed that they're acquiring, the fish is needed, the exploitation of the fish is needed to create money for other fish to die. But the fish, the feed that they're getting, the process of that, the supply is already dwindling. So between Peru, where El Nino and La Nina is affecting their fish movements, and let's not even talk about the AMOCs collapsing, right? Like in Kentucky yesterday, the huge floods that happened. Here, it hasn't rained. We've been in a 1,200-year drought while it's flooding in the middle of America. But it's about water, right? So the water is the money. It's not about actually caring about the animals, or the earth, or the people who live here.
Your time is up. Thank you. Kent? If there's anybody else that wants to speak that's on the list, follow up Kent, and then we're going to go to the phone lines.
Kent Swawsky, I'm here for a multitude of reasons. One is, I lost a political bet with Jeff Hunterlock, and I owe him a beer. I'm hoping you will forgive me for endorsing this project, and maybe we'll clear that debt. That's a very small part. I really appreciate the project. I really appreciate Lynette Mullen, who's been outstanding, taking my phone calls. I can be very persistent, as you all know. And so my shout-out, as far as a successful project, a lot of it has, in my opinion, to do with Lynette Mullen. The prior project, working with Teragin, I was not getting phone calls returned. I had no interaction. Did have some joustings, and that project could have happened quite easily a little bit further down south. It'd still be a great project, not impairing the native tribes' uses and Scotia's needs, and that project could go through right now, instantly, and I think would have a lot of support. So anyway, please move forward with this one, and I do support all the jobs for Jeff and his people there, beer considered or not. So thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you.
My name is Rafael Cuevasuribe. I am a professor in aquaculture at Cal Poly Humboldt. I have a master and PhD in aquaculture. I have more than 20 years of experience in aquaculture. I have visited more than 30 recirculating aquaculture facilities throughout the United States. I am familiar with this technology. The recirculating system that Nordic is proposing to install here is the most advanced system that I have ever witnessed. For example, they will be using membrane filtration of ultrafiltration that will be able to remove dissolved substances down to 40 nanometers. This technology was developed for portable or drinking water, and it was unthinkable to use it in aquaculture because it was too expensive to use. I've never seen a recirculating system with this type of cutting-edge technology. The demand of seafood is increasing. Currently, the average American, we consume about 32 pounds per person per year of seafood. The truth is that we are not getting more fish from out of the ocean. That is why we import more than 90% of the seafood that we consume. This has led to a seafood deficit of more than $17 billion just in 2019. This is the largest stress deficit of any agricultural commodity. The aquaculture industry in the United States, instead of increasing, it has been declining. Just here in California, we used to have 124 aquaculture farms in 2013. Now, we are down to 91. This declining is not because of the lack of funding, because every year, the federal government spent about $100 million on aquaculture research. But instead, this decrease is due because aquaculture has been defined by its critics rather by its proponents. I am here to support Nordic Aqua Farms.
Thank you. Okay, I'm now going to open up the phone lines, and the first caller is Public 6272. Oh, Thomas, you had a question?
I just wanted to clarify, Chair, that you're closing public comment in person, and you're now opening it to the phone lines. Is that correct or incorrect?
Yes.
Thank you.
6272, star six to unmute.
My name is Scott Frasier, and I live in Blue Lake. The request before you this evening should be denied for the following reasons. Data recollection on the adverse impacts to longfin shrimp and analysis of those negative impacts will not until next calendar year. Think about this. You are being asked to approve a project without knowledge what impacts on listed species are. The Harbor District is under contract for approximately $300,000 for work to document environmental effects, and you are being asked to approve a project before analysis can be completed. Why? It is premature to approve this project at this time. Secondly, many other marine life forms, in addition to longfin shrimp, will be adversely affected by the 10 million gallons per day of saltwater intakes, including important species like Dungeness crab and herring. No adequate mitigation is proposed for take of important food chain life forms or commercially important fisheries. The proposed mitigation is specific and is legally inadequate. Third, the DEIR Appendix R is a letter from consulting firm SHN to the Harbor District, which contains guidance from NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, which states in part, "When possible, intakes should be located offshore to minimize fish contact. Following the NOAA guidelines and locating the saltwater intake offshore is an environmentally superior project alternative to the proposal being considered, which should be required by a condition of your approval if you so choose. Failure to do so simply invites conflict and legal challenges. Fourth, sources of protein fish food for the Atlantic production have not been identified. This makes mitigation measures impossible to address and result in a critically flawed project. You should not allow multiple sources of prey food items to be eliminated from the availability to our native fishery stocks. The project proponents are asking you to simply trust them to do the right thing. Reject this request or require alternative food resources from plant-based or farmed insect food sources to be used. As it stands, the final EIR is inadequate. Please add a condition to move the saltwater intake offshore. Approval of this proposal just ensures opposition and extended conflicts, which will delay or ruin chances of success. You may also see my draft EIR upper dated 21522 for additional specific descriptions of adverse impacts. Thank you."
Thank you. Next caller, Jamie Blatter.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Blatter. I'm speaking as a member of 350 Humboldt, but also as a concerned citizen. I hold a master's degree in climate change, science, and solutions with a focus in marine science. I have worked in environmental justice and conservation work for nearly a decade. Today, I'm here as an ally to those whose voices may not be heard in this process. I am here to speak about the injustice that will be perpetuated by this project. I am here to speak about the injustice that will be perpetuated by this project. Indigenous peoples who highly value salmon, both culturally and as sustenance, have safeguarded salmon since time immemorial, only to see it decimated within a few generations since colonial arrival on their lands. The appetite of the wealthy for salmon, combined with climate change also caused by the wealthy, has depleted many salmon stocks to near extinction. Instead of addressing the root causes of this problem and considering lifestyle changes, we are attempting to find ways to continue eating salmon even as it grows scarcer and scarcer. The very premise of this is alarming. However, this is in line with the way we have approached many similar climate, biodiversity, injustice crises. Dig in our heels, shelter ourselves from the worst impacts, and hope for technological salvation. Because salmon is a predator fish, it must eat a kilogram of other fish to produce a kilogram of salmon. These speed fish, such as sardines and anchovies, come from the waters of local and indigenous people globally, who eat this fish as a primary source of sustenance. So poor countries, some of which are facing food shortages, have their fish fed to Atlantic salmon that are then sold to upper-middle-class in overdeveloped countries. For those who call this an economic opportunity, I ask for whom? For Nordic, and I do not minimize the livelihood of the 150 people that will be employed by this project. But for every one person who gains, many more lose. We need to look beyond short-term gains for a handful of people. We need to act from our conscience rather than our personal interests. The climate impacts of this project, which my colleagues will discuss in detail, will contribute to the devastation that disproportionately impacts the poor and oppressed as well as future generations of our own children, while the privileged are widely shielded from the worst impacts. This project is in direct violation of both economic and climate justice that extends far beyond our small community. People around the world, young, elderly, indigenous people, and people of color are calling for change. They are watching. Let's not let them down. Let history look favorably upon us, and do not let this move forward. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next caller is Brendan.
Yeah, hello? Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Yeah. My name's Brendan Stems. I'm a father, husband, commercial fisherman, taxpayer, and employer. I've been a resident of Humboldt County for 22 years. I've been involved in monitoring Nordic Aquaculture's proposed salmon farm since the very beginning. The more that I've learned about Nordic's plan, the more I have become opposed. For example, 25,000 metric tons or 55 million pounds of farmed salmon annually being dumped on the domestic market will have extremely negative impacts on the wild salmon market. This negative effect could cause job loss for hundreds of fishing communities from Alaska to California. This loss far outweighs the minimal jobs gained for Humboldt County. In addition, there will be negative environmental impacts. For example, 12.5 million gallons of warm, nutrient-rich water being pumped into our ocean will add to the problems with existing harmful algae blooms. Also, there will be problems with more quality of juvenile fish and other organisms at the plant's intake. In addition, this project's energy demands of approximately 25 megawatts will move us away from the goal of reducing our energy consumption. This facility's proposed building site is on an active fault line and in a tsunami zone, which increases the likelihood of catastrophic equipment failure leading to possible fish escapes. Ultimately, land-based aquaculture like this leads to the distraction of repairing our natural resources that we all depend on. I have talked with over 100 commercial salmon fishermen up and down the West Coast that can't be here today that are all unanimously opposed to this project. I urge the Humboldt County Planning Commission to not approve this project. Humboldt County should do the same thing that the president and vice president of Nordic did. We should walk away from Nordic Aquaculture. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, Laura Simpson. You there, Laura? Star six to unmute. Okay, we'll move on to the next caller, Jennifer Knight.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Okay, so just a second. Let me get my stuff ready. Hi, my name is Jennifer Knight, and I have the honor of addressing you tonight on behalf of 350 Humboldt. This organization focuses on global warming and the impact that greenhouse gases have on global warming. I'm going to be providing you with some data regarding information that has been left out of Nordic Aquafarm's EIR. You have been provided with this data to further review after I shock you with the staggering amount of greenhouse admissions left out of the current EIR regarding fish food. 350 Humboldt has calculated the greenhouse gas emissions for fish food, and this data is important because this feed would not be produced outside of this project. So it needs to be considered in the EIR. According to the sustainability reports of fish food manufacturers, Skirting and Cargill, who are the two biggest manufacturers of sustainable fish feed in the world, they calculate that Nordic Aquafarm greenhouse emissions would be in diodes of tons of CO2 per ton of feed. In four of their factories, they range from a minimum of 2.5 to a maximum of 5.28 tons of CO2 per ton of feed. And then we have Cargill, who uses an average, and they predict 2.67 tons of CO2 per ton of feed. So if we calculate the greenhouse gas admission from how much food that Nordic is using, which is in the SAF report that they provided you, they plan to use approximately 36,300 metric tons of feed per year. And if we do the multiplication here, that means a minimum of 74,415 tons of CO2 per year, and that's the low end. And the high end is the maximum of a whopping 191,664 metric tons of CO2 per year. So Cargill comes in at 96,921 metric tons of greenhouse gas per year. So these figures are huge. And to put that in perspective for you, the EPA Greenhouse Gas Converter says that 74,000 metric tons of CO2, which is the low end of the calculation, is equivalent to driving an average gasoline-powered car 183,683,211 miles, or almost driving your car to the sun. If you look at the whopping 191,664 metric tons, it's equivalent to burning 443,810 barrels of oil a year. You have a big responsibility on your shoulders. CO2 does not respect borders. This will have ill impact.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Do not certify this EIR.
Thank you. Next caller, we'll try Laura Simpson again. Star six to unmute.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm with 350 Humboldt. We calculated the greenhouse gases for the transportation sector of the EIR using an emissions formula of 161 grams of CO2 for each ton mile, yielding 5,479 metric tons of CO2. Our emissions estimate is 2.3 times higher than what was provided, the estimate in the EIR. These higher emissions do justify requiring electric or green hydrogen trucks. Regarding what could go wrong, a lot could go wrong. We have to deal with sea level rise. We're going to have more extreme weather events with rain and possible high winds and storm surge. We also could have a major earthquake, contaminated fish eggs. I heard the speakers talk about testing, and I'm grateful for that. But nonetheless, the issue is there that they could become contaminated with viruses, also viruses in the effluent. The antibiotics used for the fish feed can create resistant bacteria and also fire, something that we all can relate to. Nordic has focused on sustainability. The county has gotten stuck for corporate failures before, including at the Pulp Mill site. If this project goes forward, I would ask that you require a performance bond from Nordic in the amount of $500 million to protect Humboldt County taxpayers. You should know that the proposed facility is going to be 17 times larger than what they've ever done before. And they haven't had years of experience in raising salmon. Some experts say that you should have a test of three successive successful consecutive cohorts with two years possible for each cohort. Nordic has already had major organizational difficulties, losing executives, and a corporate split. Given the risks, this does not sound like a good deal for Humboldt County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller, Colin Fisk.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Colin Fisk. I'm the executive director of CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. Our members include several local nonprofit organizations, as well as hundreds of individual members and supporters throughout the county. Along with several other organizations, we've been meeting with Nordic regularly over the last few years, and we're very grateful that they have committed to 100% renewable electricity for the project as well as program for reducing single-occupancy vehicle commute trips by their employees. These are significant and meaningful mitigations. That said, many other significant impacts have yet to be addressed, and I do urge you to heed the input of other organizations, many of whom have expertise in these areas regarding the unquantified climate impacts of the project's fish feed and refrigeration systems, its intake and outfall, and other impacts. I also want to call your attention to the fact that the project will add hundreds of car trips and 190 new truck trips per week to Highways 255 and 101, many of them traversing corridors like Broadway, which are already experiencing crisis-level traffic fatality rates. The project's additional traffic will inevitably exacerbate the crisis, and as mitigation, it should contribute a proportional amount of funding toward planned but unfunded safety projects in the impacted corridors. Furthermore, one aspect of the project's transportation demand, which has not been addressed, is the excess of employee parking. You have before you a special permit to reduce the required number of truck spaces, which is reasonable, but for some reason, no request to reduce the number of car parking spaces, despite the fact that the plan calls for 25 more spaces than the maximum number of employees on a shift. So in other words, even if every single employee drove their own vehicle to work, there would be a huge excess of parking. It's not only unnecessary, but it also undermines the otherwise good employee commute incentive program and adds additional impacts. So we encourage you to reduce the excessive number of car parking spaces. Finally, as you know, the energy usage of the project will be enormous. And while that doesn't necessarily represent a substantial problem if the offshore wind resources developed in time, there's also unfortunately a feasible scenario in which offshore wind is not developed or not in a timely manner. And in that scenario, the project would make it much, much more difficult to meet our CEAs officially adopted goal for 2030, which is 100% local renewable electricity. And therefore, it would present a significant energy impact under CEQA. So for that and other reasons, in addition to requesting mitigation for safety impacts and reduced parking lot, we would support the call for either a smaller project or a time-limited permit, which would allow reassessment of the project's impacts after a reasonable amount of time
10 seconds.
when more information is available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Nadalyn Delap, Eureka resident. And I want to comment on a strong support for this project. I think that this is incredible long-range planning on behalf of our Harbor Commission and our greater community. And I really want to thank all of the people and companies that have been involved in producing this project. And thank you, Nordic, for taking a risk on Humboldt County. We are known for saying no to projects, but I think that the work that's been done on this project to date, the level of analysis on behalf of our agencies, all of the consultants involved, and our planning department is pretty incredible. And I would like to say, as a person who likes to eat food, and particularly fish, I look forward to having new consumer choices, which include locally-produced salmon in addition to wild salmon that I'm sometimes able to afford. I hope that many of our local restaurants in the future choose to replace net-raised salmon with our new locally-farmed salmon. And with that, thank you very much. I support this project.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Annalee Fonborstel. I'm a Humboldt County resident and a real estate broker. I want to express support for the Nordic Aquafarm project in its entirety. The numerous measurable net benefits to our local, national, and global environment and economy make it indisputably one of the most positive and exciting projects that Humboldt has seen in its modern history. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, Jessie Misha.
Hi, this is Jessie Misha. I'm the chair of the Surf Rider Foundation Humboldt Chapter. Surf Rider's mission is to protect our ocean waves and beaches for all people. Our members and supporters are those who live and recreate along our 110 miles of coastline here in Humboldt County. Surf Rider stands with our partners at the North Coast Environmental Center, Bay Keepers, Sierra Club, Epic, and CRTP, and urges the county to incorporate the requests that we've enumerated in our July 27th letter. Particularly, we support a phased approach for this project. We urge the county to add a special permit condition that requires a very detailed adaptive management plan based on a phased approach prior to the issuance of this permit. Commissioner Levy actually inquired about this earlier in the meeting, and I'd like to thank him for his concern. Given the precedence for the scale of this project and potential for enormous impacts to our bay and climate, a phased approach where specific criteria are actually met before moving to Phase 2 would help ensure the impacts are minimized in compliance with the California Coastal Act. The applicant has agreed to do the two phases, but there should be clearly articulated requirements that are actually met before that second phase can begin, and that should be built into the permit. Surf Rider is also extremely concerned about the greenhouse gas emissions associated with this project, especially given the potential to exacerbate sea level rise and coastal hazards. We would like to echo others' concerns that the permit conditions need to be improved to ensure minimal climate impact. The county must add special conditions that require a transition to zero-emissions trucks and transportation and also require low-carbon footprint feed based on annual evaluations. We also urge the county to require a special condition that Nordic complete a more extensive sea level rise analysis, including groundwater rise impacts, onsite prior to issuance of the permit. As groundwater rises, legacy contamination could be mobilized, impacting employee safety and water quality in the bay and surrounding wetlands. Nordic should be required to regularly monitor groundwater rise and ensure adequate adaptation over the coming decades. Nordic should also be required to restore the site to EPA's criteria for brownfield remediation to residential development standards, meaning complete removal of all onsite contamination in order to ensure safety moving forward. Given the scale and lack of adaptability of this new infrastructure, an analysis should evaluate the extreme sea level rise scenario H++ as detailed in the Coastal Commission's critical infrastructure guidance. Under the Coastal Act, no new development may rely on shoreline armoring due to its effect that exacerbates coastal erosion. The county's permit should be restored. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Susan Gillespie, interim CEO of the Greater Eureka Chamber of Commerce. The Board of Directors of the Greater Eureka Chamber of Commerce has previously expressed its strong support for the proposed Nordic Aquafarm facility, and we urge the Humboldt County Planning Commission to adopt the resolution to allow the project to move forward. The Greater Eureka Chamber of Commerce represents more than 500 businesses in the region. The chamber recognizes that the project will stimulate economic activity, provide employment opportunity, and include valuable community benefits, including cleaning up of an abandoned and blighted industrial site. We believe that Nordic's project will be a catalyst for other business development in our area and have already witnessed the positive impact their efforts have had in promoting infrastructure upgrades in our region. We're confident that Nordic Aquafarms will become a strong and contributing member of our local business, community, and economy. The Greater Eureka Chamber of Commerce is pleased to support this effort and asks the Humboldt County Planning Commission to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. 2466.
Oh, hi. Is it my turn to talk?
Yes, welcome.
Oh, thank you. My name is Wendy Ring. I'm a local physician and public health professional. National health organizations representing half a million U.S. doctors are calling for urgent climate action, but the window to prevent catastrophic warming is rapidly closing. Nordic EIR relies on RCEA's plan to have 100% clean energy by 2025, but only a small fraction will be local. Offshore wind is unlikely to be here by 2030. The large increase in electricity demand would require more local natural gas and biomass combustion with increased air pollution and greenhouse gas emissions that will not be offset 24/7 by clean energy procured out of county. If this project is approved, it should be required to invest more in local carbon-free energy. At least a quarter of Nordic's electricity will be used for cooling. Refrigerants are powerful greenhouse gases which warm the planet thousands of times more than carbon dioxide. Refrigerant leaks at average rates from industrial chillers often cause more global warming than the plants producing the power to run them. California regulations outlaw the worst refrigerants in 2024, but still allow coolants which warm over 2,000 times more than carbon dioxide. There are effective low-warming alternatives, like ammonia and carbon dioxide itself, and it is disturbing to me that Nordic has refused to commit to using them. Given the large amount of electricity the facility will consume and the large volume of refrigerants and refrigerant leaks that supplies, Nordic should have included greenhouse gas emissions from refrigerants in the EIR, using the highest global warming coolant the state allows. Since they didn't, if you approve this project, you should make it contingent on using those effective low-warming refrigerants with a global warming potential of one or less. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name's Don Allen, and I've worked in wild salmon restoration for over 40 years. I've seen millions of dollars spent around Humboldt Bay on habitat restoration. And I do want to thank Nordic Aqua Farms and the Harbor Commission for their presentations. I know they've tried to put as much lipstick on this pig as they can to make it look good. And I do admit that there are some issues that they have addressed that I appreciate them addressing. There are people who have made comments about greenhouse gases who have studied a lot more than I do, and I take their word that there needs to be a lot more, especially over the production of food. One of my concerns, having worked in wild salmon restoration, is the food fish that's going to be used for these Atlantic salmon. So it's going to have a huge impact on the anchovies and sardines and other fish that wild salmon use. And, you know, we've seen the southern resident orca population decline seriously because of the reduction in salmon, and a lot of that's tied to climate change. And here you have a project that looks like it's going to contribute to climate change while it's also going to deplete the forage fish that wild salmon live on. So I think you have not adequately addressed those conditions. The other concern of mine would be with an accidental release of the Atlantic salmon into Humboldt Bay or the ocean in case of tsunami inundation. And I heard that addressed earlier in one of the presentations, like there's going to be screens over the tanks, but in a tsunami inundation, those screens are not going to work. So I think you need some kind of secondary containment. You know, I'm not saying I'm opposed to this project, but in its current condition, I would urge you to not approve it, and I would urge you to listen to the comments from the people. And, you know, to the operating engineers, I understand that this would be a lot of work for you, and I'm definitely sympathetic to that, and I hope you do get a lot of work out of the wind farm and other things. I just think Nordic Aqua Farms needs to go back and do a little bit more homework on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Randy Carrico. Star six, there you go.
Yes. My name is Randy Carrico. I'm a member of 350 Humboldt. Nordic has committed to buying low-carbon electricity to supply its facility. In the EIR, it states that, as a result, the carbon intensity factor would be zero pounds of CO2 equivalent per megawatt hour. But Nordic is going to be using a lot of power. It's going to be coming from solar, wind, natural gas, and they all have direct, indirect, and lifecycle CO2 emissions. So that needs to be addressed. Hopefully, we'll have a wind farm out here that will take up some of that slack, but there's CO2 emissions involved with the production and installation and lifecycle of wind farms. So that's a big concern of mine that needs to be resolved. It's not zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Star six, unmute. Okay, we'll move on to Public 1051.
Good evening. My name's Tony Vought. I'm the President of the California Aquaculture Association, and I've been in the business of aquaculture for over 40 years as a farmer consultant and advisor. I've watched aquaculture grow and mature in the U.S. and worldwide, but unfortunately in the U.S., it hasn't been at the same pace as other places in the world. Consequently, we import most of our fish from those fish farms and other countries. And the quality and quantity of fish that comes in, certainly in a lot of cases, is very good, but in some cases, it's unregulated. And a lot of times, the fish need to be flown in, fresh fish. Frozen fish sometimes come in by container ship. So we need to address food security in our country. We need to make sure that the technology we've developed here in the U.S. isn't being used in other countries to simply ship the fish back to us. The project has the support of the California Aquaculture Association. I think it's a good fit for the area, and we do have a shortage of seafood in the U.S., and we need to address that. I was involved in the initial site evaluation of the site with the Harbor District, and both the Harbor District and Nordic has done a really good job of laying out the benefits to this, but there's a bigger responsibility here, too, and that's really food security and making sure that we produce our own food here at home. And I just wanted to thank Nordic for doing such a good job of jumping through all the hoops, and good luck on the project, and wanted to support it, as well as the members of the California Aquaculture Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Snyder, there you go.
Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Right. Chris, I'm the Local Director for the Operating Engineers. I just keep, I'm in full support of the Nordic project. I worked up there for many years, and now I'm down in Santa Rosa, and I know the area needs a lot of jobs. It's going to be good for apprenticeship. It's going to promote a lot of local young men and women to work, and they've worked hand in glove with the community, with labor, and just really excited to have this project there, and it's a huge opportunity for the region. The region is in need of jobs desperately, and the operating engineers will three supports it, the community supports it, and I'd like to see it passed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. John Friedenbach.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name's John Friedenbach. I'm the General Manager at Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. Our district was formed in 1956 to supply industrial water to two pulp mills utilizing the Mad River's abundant water resource. One of those pulp mills was at the Nordic site that they planned to use for their project. And you saw pictures of that, I think it was from Larry Ottkerr's presentation. The district reliably provided 65 million gallons per day. Let me repeat that, 65 million gallons per day of industrial water to those two pulp mills for nearly 50 years. The last pulp mill closed in 2009. Nordic Aqua Farms is requesting only 3 million gallons per day of raw water from the Mad River, which the district can easily provide. This is only 4.5% of our previous industrial water that we supplied to those pulp mills. The district supports Nordic Aqua Farms' project, which will utilize our industrial water system. Their project will enhance our local economy by providing jobs from construction of the facility to their day-to-day operations and contribute revenue to help maintain our regional water system. We ask you support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, Jennifer Savage.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jennifer Savage, and I'm speaking as a member of Surf Rider Foundation's Humboldt Chapter and a 20-year Manila resident. First, additional studies are needed to determine that there will be no significant impact from the discharge through the outfall pipe. As you may or may not be aware, the reason that the outfall pipe exists is due to a 1991 lawsuit that Surf Rider and the EPA brought against the two pulp mills that were operating at the time. Those pulp mills were dumping 40 million gallons a day of untreated waste, laced with dioxin and hundreds of other contaminants directly into the ocean. I am glad we've come such a long way from those dark days, and certainly cleaning up the site would be beneficial to the community. However, we should learn from past lessons that caution is paramount. Therefore, Surf Rider requests that as a condition of approval, Nordic begin monitoring as soon as the facility begins discharging and be required to provide evidence that the discharge, including increased nutrients and decreased dissolved oxygen levels, is not impacting water quality or biological resources or contributing to harmful algal blooms before moving into Phase Two of this project. Second, as someone who spends a lot of time driving, biking, and changing in and out of a suit along Old Navy Base Road, I can tell you that 190 new heavy-duty truck trips per week, that's 95 into the facility and 95 back out, worries me greatly. The current state of the road is, it's terrible. It's full of potholes. It's lacking much of a shoulder in most places, which makes coastal access via bicycles sadly subpar. So adding 190 heavy-duty truck trips will only make the road and the risk exponentially worse. And when the surf is good or the day is nice, visitors to Eureka's closest beaches have little choice but to park along the road and unload gear and picnic supplies as cars and trucks go roaring by. So we can't allow a dramatic increase in heavy truck traffic without parallel efforts to protect the people trying to enjoy the coast, as is our right in California. Therefore, as a condition of approval, Nordic should be required to contribute funding to plan traffic safety and road improvements along the routes they will be utilizing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Carolyn Griffith.
Good evening. This is Carolyn Griffith. I'm the Executive Director of the North Coast Environmental Center. And first, I'd like to say that we really do appreciate the fact that leadership from Nordic has been accessible during this process and open to suggestions and negotiating to address some of our concerns. It's not exactly common in these situations, and as mentioned, they've committed to using 100% renewable non-carbon energy and purchasing it locally when possible. They're also amenable to implementing a transportation management plan, so employees don't have to drive single occupancy vehicles to the site, both of which are great. And we do appreciate that they have gone above what is legally required on this project. But that said, and although we're excited about the prospect of seeing the pulp mill site cleaned up, this is a really massive project, much larger than anything that Nordic has built so far, and there are so many unknowns, so we do have a lot of remaining concerns, the main one being ocean discharge, which the previous speaker spoke eloquently about. And we have the same concerns as Commissioner Levy about monitoring during Phase One. So appreciate the clarification from Ms. Chandler that monitoring will start when discharging does, but we suggest that this condition be amended to clearly state that post-discharge monitoring will begin as soon as discharging begins, so that there's no confusion and so that we know that the discharge is not affecting biological resources or contributing to harmful algal blooms before they move into Phase Two. And as has been mentioned, Nordic has agreed to a transportation management plan for employees. However, there will still be significant emissions associated with product deliveries and transportation of waste, so we additionally suggest that as a condition of approval, Nordic adopt an adaptive management plan requiring transitioning to zero emission trucks and other vehicles as soon as they become commercially available, rather than waiting until it's required by law. My next point and concern is about fish feed. Throughout the environmental review process, Nordic has stated that it cannot, at this point, determine what the source of fish feed they will be using, and we understand the need for flexibility as a project is being developed. However, we think it is reasonable to require Nordic, as a condition of approval, to commit to using commercially available feed that has the lowest carbon footprint possible and that this be revisited on a yearly basis to ensure that the feed that is being used is always the least carbon intensive that is commercially available and that they aren't using fish feed that other people or animals rely on. We have concerns about traffic safety as well with more trucks on the road, and like a previous caller suggests that as a condition of approval, Nordic be required to contribute funding to planned traffic safety improvements along the routes they'll be utilizing, many of which are already planned and are just in need of funding. And really, in short, it's the scale of the project that is really concerning. And we suggest starting with a smaller project or that the Planning Commission consider using a CDP, issuing a CDP that expires within a set amount of time, maybe five or 10 years.
Okay, your time's up.
So that we have an opportunity to...
Time's up. Thank you. All right. We're at 9:15, and we are going to have to continue this meeting till the next meeting. We have business that we couldn't do because of our glitch at the beginning that we need to go back. We need to open up public comment on items that aren't on this. We also need to get our consent calendar taken care of. So we're gonna, would you like us to make a motion to continue this to August 4th? Okay? So would somebody like to make a motion to continue this to August 4th?
So moved.
All right, and a second.
I'll second.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Trip, roll call vote, please.
Can I just have a point of discussion before we do that? Did we get through all the public comment?
No, we didn't. We had, it shows nine more, but there's no way we're going to get through it tonight, and we had to go back and address this.
Got it. I just wanted to be clear that we are leaving it open for public comment at the subsequent meeting.
Yes, and I've been taken down, I think the director has too, everybody who's been calling, so.
Yeah.
I can produce a report tomorrow that will say everyone that raised their hands in the meeting.
Great, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Well, we're not going to get to any discussion. I mean, we could stay later if everybody wanted to do that, and we might get through the nine callers that are there, but as we know, every time you get to the end, people keep adding onto the list, and so I don't think we will. And we're not going to have the time to have a discussion after that, so.
I would totally agree that we're not going to have a chance to have a discussion. Would it perhaps, though, make sense to try to get through the public comment and then just have that part closed?
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Thomas has his hand up, too, so if that's what everybody wants, I'm willing to do that, but we still have other business that we need to take care of, too.
I would submit, just offer for alternative, we do need to go back to public comment, for sure, but the consent calendar items can be continued to August 4th also.
Okay. Thomas, you put your hand up, so. Thomas, you put your hand up, so...
I was just... The rest of the commissioners sound like they're kinda leaning that way, just praying that we get through public comment on this, so that way, that part of the public process is done. I don't know what the exact wording is there, but that's just kinda my request.
Okay. If it's what everybody wants to do, I'm game to stay. I just... So we have a motion and a second on the floor, so would the first and the second take that back so we can continue?
I would like to rescind my second.
Taking back my motion.
He say he is?
And I would like to motion to continue the consent calendar to August 4.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? As well as, there's also the letter to the supervisors, so that'll come back at August 4 as well. All right? So we have a motion and a second on that. Trip, a roll call on that.
Mike.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Melanie McCaver.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
And Noah Levy.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, with that, we'll go back to public comment and the next caller is 6127. Star six to unmute yourself. Okay, let's move on then. Next caller is Jennifer Kalt.
Hi there. Oh, sorry, let me hang up my phone here. Sorry, you tricked me into making dinner. Hi, my name's Jennifer Kalt. I'm the Director of Humboldt Baykeeper. And so much has been said tonight, I really want to echo the comments of the representatives from North Coast Environmental Center, Surf Rider Foundation, and Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities in particular. Cleaning up the former pulp mill site and building a modern stormwater system would definitely be beneficial for Humboldt Bay. However, the massive scale of the project and the fact that Nordic Aqua Farms has not proven success with the project anywhere near this size causes a serious concern for the health of the ocean, Humboldt Bay, and all of the people and species who rely on them. Starting with a smaller project with clear benchmarks of when the project can scale up would go a long way to address these concerns and give assurances. We asked the company repeatedly to start with Phase One to show the project could succeed without negative impacts, but they refused. We do appreciate all the time they've spent with us over the past three years answering questions and in some cases modifying the project to address our concerns, but as you've heard tonight, there are many impacts that have not been adequately assessed and mitigated. Those include greenhouse gas emissions from the massive energy use and other aspects of the project, impacts to lungfish smelt, and estrogens in the affluent. Humboldt Baykeeper has deepness givings about the potential for the ocean discharge to exacerbate toxic algae blooms and other impacts to the marine ecosystem. We strongly support modifying coastal development permits, conditions of approval number 17 and 18, to clearly require ongoing monitoring near the ocean discharge throughout the life of the project, beginning with baseline monitoring, as it's already stated in the conditions, but adding post-discharge receiving water monitoring ongoing from the time the facility begins to discharge, not after full buildout of Phase Two, as the CDP currently states. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, 6127. Star six to unmute. All right. I'm gonna move on again. That was John Schaefer. John. Okay, I'll move on. Dennis Leonardi.
Good evening. Am I there?
Yes. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. I really wanna thank the early presenters on, I think, doing an excellent job on their presentations. It was very clear and understandable and addressed just about every point you can imagine. I'll start off, I'm a Ferndale Dairyman for 50 years. I've been an organic Dairyman for 16 of those. And I also call myself a community advocate for whatever that's worth. And I do support the project for a number of reasons, and I think they're kinda global. I don't think we should underestimate the benefit of removing this old deteriorating pulp mill structures. The benefits to jobs, construction, and long-term employment are just absolutely enormous. Nordic's commitment to move forward in the most regulated, restrictive, and rigorous permitting process probably in the world and not backing away is absolutely laudable. We've gotten so used as a community to saying no, we've gotta figure out how to say yes to something. The opportunity for Cal Poly, CR, the Work Development Board, and others to provide education, training programs, and opportunities for Humboldters to stay home and work is commendable. Traffic is really minimal compared to the wood products industry that used to frequent the highway out there. And if you do the math and divide out the number of trucks by, say, 15 hours a day, it's one or two trucks an hour, which is not outrageous. And in a bigger picture, if you think about how much fossil fuel is used transporting salmon in from around the world compared to producing it here and distributing it locally, locally meaning in the West Coast, it's just enormously beneficial to do it right here at home. And kinda in general, we probably ought to think about not letting perfection impede progress, because we can think of a million tiny reasons to stop something that's really community beneficial. So thank you for letting me talk. Again, I couldn't unmute the first time and I would be there in person, but I'm kinda back into COVID, so I don't wanna breathe on anybody. So thanks, guys.
Thank you. John Schaefer.
Ah ha, now I can unmute. Turn that off. Well, we all know I'm John Schaefer now. I live in Arcata and I too am a member of 350.org. So my concern is the climate emergency. And under current conditions, the power suppliers to Nordic will probably add to CO2 emissions. I worked over four decades in electricity and renewable energy, so with that background, let me suggest a win-win caveat to your approval. Looks like a good project to me and I hope you will approve it. The caveat is that Nordic and the county, or maybe our CEA, find a partner to build a roughly 150-megawatt local wind power plant. There is one successful offshore wind company in Norway, but there are others as well. I'm not suggesting that Nordic build a wind plant here, that's not their business, but they find someone who will, and we, the county, should help them. The win-win solution requires local wind power onshore, perhaps along the peninsula, or offshore, either floating or fixed bottom. Such an installation would supply electricity that we can be proud of, not just for Nordic, but also for the rest of the county. Our Teragen experience suggests there'll be objections to altered views along the beach. I say in response to those objections that wind turbines there would manifest a valuable investment for our grandchildren's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Ryerson.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm an Arcata resident. I'm also speaking for 350 Humboldt as a steering committee member. And we ask that you redo this EIR and delay approval of a conditional use permit. We're most concerned, as you've heard before, about the amount of greenhouse gas emissions. And currently, our CEA in their clean power is still using biomass. And biomass burns carbon and the emissions from it are dirtier than coal plants. So we're concerned about the massive amount of electricity that Nordic would be using right at the time when we are trying to transition away from fossil fuels in our transportation and in our buildings. We also have concern about the risk whether the project will actually materialize or suffer system failure if it is built. And we are concerned about the enormous increase in these greenhouse gas emissions, both from the project's transportation of product and the transportation of fish feed. We have less than seven years to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, to do our part to reduce global warming and stay below 2 degrees Celsius of warming. If you do decide to approve this project, we ask that you take the following actions. Redo the EIR to include all the sources of greenhouse gases, especially those Nordic will be certifying to Aquaculture Stewardship Council each year. Require adaptive management for the heating cooling system, so emissions are calculated for each year and either fixed or mitigated. And require the use of ultra-low, that's less than 10 global warming potential refrigerants, or specification of and offset the refrigerant leakage. Require mitigation of greenhouse gases attributable to fish food and unrecognized emissions from renewable energy. Require Nordic to install solar microgrid units as backup for power addages, so it's not using fossil fuel generators and spewing out even more greenhouse gases and air pollution. Require Nordic to underwrite the cost of energy storage from solar and wind energy to help Humboldt get closer to 24/7 carbon-free renewable energy and reduce emissions. Require Nordic to put up a $500-million bond to ensure that the county and its taxpayers and living environment are not left holding the bag if things go wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, Jack Rice.
Good evening. This is Jack Rice, resident of Humboldt County near Fortuna, board member for the Humboldt Prosperity Alliance, speaking in support of the project. Rigorous studies have shown that this project's gonna provide environmental and economic improvements to the county. Producing salmon locally will have a global benefit to climate change, and a lot of the issues that are raised, the concerns, are a little hard for me to understand, because while they seem to think globally, they seem to be opposing everything locally. And this is a chance for our county to can make a contribution to how food is sourced and the manner, environmentally and climate-based, in how salmon is produced. We can be part of that. It will have an economic benefit, it'll clean up a site in our county, and it'll help the global community. That I encourage you to approve the project and please don't include requirements to asking Nordic or the county to approve a negative. That's just an endless pit of analysis. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Delgado.
Hi there. My name's Matt Delgado. I'm an independent wildlife biologist and a member of the local chapter of the Wildlife Society in Humboldt County. I can echo a lot of the environmental concerns that have already been raised, and I understand that Humboldt wants to bring in more jobs for people who are here locally. But I think the thing we have to consider is that Humboldt Bay is the number one asset that we have, and Humboldt Bay is a global asset to a number of shorebird species and other fauna that we have here that bring in people from out of the country, even, you know, from out of the state to come here and enjoy. Like, we have, environmental tourism is one of our biggest assets to Humboldt County. And while there are mitigations that could make Nordic beneficial to the county, if something goes wrong in these environmental mitigations, it could destroy the big asset we have in Humboldt. And that is everything that uses the bay that needs the bay, including ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Sal Flores.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Sal Flores. I'm a member and this is Representative for operating engineers. I just wanna say I do support this project, along with all our other members. This project definitely is gonna be instrumental to the local community and providing local jobs for all the men and women in the area. As you heard, some of these members having to drive two, three hours away for work and not being able to see their loved ones until the weekend, it's been pretty tough. I know I've met with a lot of members down in Sonoma County that live up in that area, so I can understand their issues. Also, I think with Nordic as well, I think they've done above and beyond their due diligence to be involved with the community and having open discussions on this project. I'm not a biologist scientist, but all in all, I feel like they've done their due diligence to do everything right and comply with everything that's been requested from them. And I hope you consider it and approve of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, 8760. Go ahead.
Hello?
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Yeah. As far as the salmon is concerned, they've been trading lead for salmon out in the ocean out there for years, and they're doing anything about that. And as far as the losing fish into the bay or whatever because of a tsunami, I think across the bay there where we've got millions of gallons of gas should be a little more concerning, you know? And as far as that goes, I think the project is awesome. You have a local kid that graduated from St. Bernard, graduated from University of Irvine, and decided to come back here and go to work instead of staying down south in LA and making twice as much money, because he wanted to make Humboldt a better place. And I think starting off with bringing back industry is a good start. And not only that, the concern of the trucks and all of that stuff, hey, how many truckloads of chips came into the two pulp mills, you know, over the years? Nobody complained about that. And those pulp mills put out more effluents than any fish farms gonna put out. Not only that, the comment about taxpayers, I think they're gonna be saving a lot of money, because Aqua Farms is cleaning up the place. So sometimes you just have to slide the book knowledge to the side and use common sense.
All right. Thank you.
And I thank you.
Thank you. 4893. Star six. All right. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak then?
Hello? Yes, Humboldt, can you hear me now?
Yep, can hear you now.
Oh, okay. My name is Martha Walden. I'm a member of 350 Humboldt. I appreciate the short-term benefit of this project, but unfortunately, when it comes to the climate, climate change puts us in an excruciating position. And I have to respond to the caller who said that the critics of this project are thinking globally but not locally. I'd like to point out that the world can do without Humboldt County, but Humboldt County cannot do without the world. I don't see how Nordic can produce 25,000 tons of Atlantic salmon every year without contributing to the climate emergency. Nordic's estimate... Nordic's estimate of their footprint leaves out the greenhouse gas emissions incurred by feeding the fish. That's a huge omission. They also seem to think that promising to buy renewable energy means it's carbon-free, but that's not the reality. With the use of as much electricity as Uta and Fortuna combined, the emissions of renewable energy and necessary peakers plant electricity should at least be counted. To minimize climate change as much as possible, California requires us to decrease our emissions forty percent below 1990 levels by 2030. Considering the limitations of our county electricity supply, how will we decarbonize while increasing our electricity usage by twenty percent? Decarbonization is not some pie-in-the-sky flaky ideal, but a stark necessity according to the best science available, not to mention sensible survival instinct and a moral responsibility. Raising a different kind of fish that don't eat as much fish as they themselves provide would help sustainability. Waiting until offshore wind is a reality would help sustainability. Sustainable means that the cost of something does not exceed its benefit. That seems obvious, yet corporations have historically flouted this common sense flaw by making someone else put the bill. Failure to reduce our emissions at this late date presents our children with an unthinkable bill. Thank you.
Thank you. 350 Humboldt.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Hello, sorry, I think that was the phone I was listening on. This is Daniel Chandler. Thank you for listening all evening. I'm on the 350 Humboldt Steering Committee. I have a PhD from UC Berkeley and a top research methodology at the graduate level. I note that the methods we have used in all of the 350 Humboldt presentations so far are explained in detail with citations in our written comments. I want, people have mentioned the greenhouse gases from fish feed, and I want to explain why that is relevant, because the EIR said it was not. In brief, Nordic has said that land-based agriculture is a sustainable enterprise, and this is guaranteed by certification of both Nordic's operation itself and certification of the fish feed that they use. I'm going to explain why the 36,300 metric tons of certified fish feed each year that the staff report says Nordic will use equates between 74,000 and 191,000 metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions, depending on which factory they buy it from. The major organization responsible for certifying quality is the Agriculture Stewardship Council, or ASC. ASC certifies the Nordic Norwegian plant. ASC includes greenhouse gases as part of their certification. The ASC requires fish feed manufacturers to calculate greenhouse gas emissions from their fish feed using the methods that fish biologists use. And ASC requires the aquafarms themselves to count these feed emissions in the greenhouse gas emissions inventory that they're required to report annually to ASC in order to be certified. So Nordic will be reporting all these greenhouse gas emissions to the ASC. Why doesn't the final EIR include these? The final EIR says the lifecycle method used by scientists and the agricultural industry is, quotes, "not commonly used in SECA analysis." SECA does explicitly permit lifecycle assessments when appropriate. In this case, it's appropriate. The method of measuring greenhouse gas emissions is required for the sustainability certification that Nordic counts, so it should be for SECA. Fish scientists and all elements of the agricultural business have agreed that the greenhouse gases from manufacturing fish feed are counted where they're fed to fish at the Nordic farm. SECA is not intended to hide greenhouse gases that all agriculture professionals agree about. It is a travesty that Nordic asks the planning committees-
Five seconds, sir. Okay, your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
6821. Star six to unmute. 6821. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Hello?
You're unmuted. Yep, welcome. Let's move on to 7969.
Hi, hi, my name's, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Oh, thank you very much. My name's Armin Morgan. I'm with Operating Engineers. I'm actually from the Bay Area, but I'm standing in solidarity with my brothers and sisters, Union Brothers and Sisters in the Humboldt County area. And I think it's a great project. You know, it's, I mean, a half a billion dollars, it'd put a lot of people to work. I mean, what's that old saying? You don't look a gift horse in the mouth. I think it's a great deal, a state-of-the-art facility. Are you gonna get rid of that old dilapidated facility? I think it's a win-win, you know? Local city and county governments would benefit from the increased revenue resulting from good-paying jobs on the Nordic aquafarms, and local businesses would benefit from local workers having good-paying jobs on the Nordic aquafarm project and spending their hard-earned money locally. Local communities would benefit from the financial stability that comes with good-paying jobs like those on the Nordic aquafarm project. So I think they're a class act. I thought the presentations were great and very descriptive and very informative. And thank you for your time, commissioners, and I know you'll do the right thing for your community. Thank you for your time. Bye.
Thank you. 6821. 6821, last chance. All right, anybody else that wishes to speak? See you none. I'm closing public comment. All right. So now, can I get a motion to continue the Nordic to the August 4th meeting, right?
You don't think we can finish?
Tonight? No, I think there's a lot to talk about.
You really think so? I've got fifteen minutes worth of questions for them. Just kidding.
I personally feel like we-
I thought we were just gonna get through public comment, I'm sorry. I'm willing to stay. If everybody wants to stay.
I'd like to point out that I'm on the East Coast and will not be able to explain my thoughts very clearly for much longer.
Wimp. I remember doing that last year.
It's up to you guys. Give me some direction. What's that mean?
That means put it on to the next meeting, and we've got the public comment done.
Yeah, so it's just-
So it's just coming back to us to ask any questions or comments, and then we can go forward.
You okay with that, Melanie?
Sure, I'll second that.
Yeah, no, that is what we tried to do and we got through it.
Okay, and we still need to, so let's get this taken care of. So we have a motion in a second to continue this to the August 4th meeting. Trip, roll call vote, please. And thank you, everybody, for being patient and working with us. It wasn't good in the beginning.
Yeah.
And then we'll get back to public comment.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
And Alan Bonjio?
Yes. Motion carries. So now, we're gonna go back and we're gonna open up public comment that we couldn't do earlier to any, on any issue that is not Nordic fish farms. So, is there anybody who wishes to speak on public comment? All right, see you none. I'm gonna close public comment. Now, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
That just, okay, we're adjourned, okay.
That's right.